Come forward and honor us.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father, once again, you have gathered these city and community leaders and citizens whom you have given responsibility and authority to watch over our city and make decisions that affect all of us. I pray that you would lead them in a way that they would make fruitful contributions and help them to deal with every agenda item that is on the docket today. And even in their executive closed session, may they think and strategize in ways that will bring great results. Your word says that we should pray for our leaders because they watch over us, for they too must give an account for their decisions and consideration. So I ask that you would work mightily in them today. So come into this room and cause them to have a productive meeting and that there be a sense of agreement and cooperation, that they can come to peaceful solutions and benefit our community. So I lift up the mayor, her staff and assistants, the city council, the city manager, and every person and department that is instrumental in leading and directing our city. I pray for the police chief and the entire police force, the sheriff's department, that they will continue to protect and serve the residents of our city. I pray for the fire chief, the fire department, and all first responders who serve our city. And lastly, I pray for continued economic prosperity and safety for our city. May you continue to draw in and attract to our city industry, businesses, and corporations that will produce jobs and revenue and help us to progress and grow. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's do the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
We have one proclamation this morning, and it is for National Leadership Day. I think we have folks in the audience to receive this proclamation, so if you would please come forward. Welcome. Leadership is an ever-present aspect of our environment, and it is beneficial to take a moment to appreciate the abundance of leadership within our community here in San Angelo. The Maxwell Leadership Enterprise founded National Leadership Day in 2021 to recognize what it means to be a good leader. Everyone can lead regardless of their title or position. Once you realize the impact of your influence, you will see that you can make a difference right where you are. That is the power of leadership. The Vasquez Development Group, right here in San Angelo, places great importance on the development of leaders within our community, including those at a young age. Their Rising Leaders Program offers students in the community a valuable opportunity to acquire essential leadership, life, and career skills. By participating in this program, students can contribute to the betterment of our community and become exemplary leaders. When you think about it, in every relationship, one person influences another, whether a parent or child, spouse or friend, student or teacher, employer or employee. In our everyday interactions with one another, someone is leading or influencing the other to do something or become something. This means that anyone can be a leader whether you have a title or not. The observance aims to empower people to help others and be change agents and difference makers in someone's life. The opportunity we have on National Leadership Day to show people what it means to be a good leader and inspire them to be a positive force of change in another person's life. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the day, the today of February 20th, 2024, as National Leadership Day in San Angelo, Texas, and recommend this observation to all citizens. Would you like to come forward and receive this? And would you offer some words, please?
Yeah, for sure. Appreciate it. Good morning, everybody. My name is Cody Vasquez with the Vasquez Development Group, and we're super excited. When I heard that National Leadership Day was something that was observed, starting a couple of years ago, I wanted to make sure that it was brought to San Angelo. We host the Rising Leaders Program that is for young professionals in our area, but honestly, we do help any sort of person who needs help in leadership, life skills, or career skills through our leadership program. We also do leader, we speak about leadership to different organizations throughout the San Angelo community, and we do have a couple of our assistant directors who help with that program. And we're in, and we're in it pretty much right now, staying pretty busy with our next cohort of students. So thank you to the City of San Angelo for recognizing this day, and hopefully every year, I mean, every day, you're celebrating leadership, but especially now on February 20th, we celebrate National Leadership Day. So thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Let's have a picture. Agenda, issues, or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Any public comment? Please come forward. Not less than three minutes. Math. Leadership. I'm glad it's Leadership Week. Now, I'm going to read a few things. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Texas. We have leadership obligations and roles. It is also National Engineers Week, and in these roles, these are legal roles that we carry and obligations, and I've done this proudly for the state of Texas for 45 years. Graduated from the University of Texas. So, the first thing I want to read is a quote from Samuel Adams. Pardon me, I didn't flip this, but I'm sure y'all got me timed. If ye love wealth better than liberty, the tranquility of servitude better than the animated contest of freedom, go home from us in peace. We ask not your counsel or arms. Crouch down and lick the hands which feed you. May your chains sit lightly upon you, and may posterity forget that you are our country people. Last month, I resigned from the estate of my dearly beloved husband of 27 years, Dennis Alfred Robinson, due to the illegalities, illegalities that have occurred in this town through illegal powers of attorneys, illegal medical powers of attorneys, not acknowledging my marriage license, my powers of attorneys, people trying to break the deed on my property in this town. So I have resigned from that, and now I am on permitted, permanent protected leave from that action, which went on for three years and four months. And it has rattled me. And I'm a very unhappy old lady. Next. Let's talk about the Engineers' Creed, because I hope to encourage other people to go into engineering, particularly women, and this is a very honored profession, and the national licensing of engineers began in 1934. And as a professional engineer, I dedicate my professional knowledge to the advancement and betterment of public health, safety, and welfare. Pledge to give the utmost of performance, to participate in none but honest enterprise, to live and work according to the highest standards of professional conduct, to place service before profit, the honor and standing of my profession before personal advantage, and the public welfare above all other considerations. As a professional engineer, I dedicate my profession to the knowledge and skill and advancement and betterment of human welfare. I plan to give the utmost in that performance, and that is what I have done and will continue to do. And there are things happening in this town and in this county that go against that. Now, the next thing, final thing I want to talk about, and we'll get into those further later. I'm timed. Okay? Thank you very much. More public comment? I'll be back later. We'll talk more about sewer gas.
Mayor, by me?
Sure.
Ivan, there's been several inquiries as to our efforts, and as far as what we're doing infrastructure, I wanted to do a really quick summary, because we're going to go in-depth into this during our budget workshops, but I want to talk a little bit about the efforts that have been expended by the city on our infrastructure. And for the past nine years, as far as the application, you've been hearing about the Seal Code Program. We've actually completed the whole Seal Code Program. We're going back around again. This is a pay-as-you-go program, which we allocate about $3 to $3.5 million per year, and that's to seal code, maintain the city streets, all the city streets, and we'd want to do this every eight years. We've actually expended about $34,267,000 on that, Mayor. And one thing I do want to note, again, I said this is a pay-as-you-go. We have not, in anything that I'm about to report, we have not increased our property tax rate. As a matter of fact, it's actually been decreased over the years that we've been working on this. The completed rehab project, which includes water, sewer, drainage, and street improvements, we've had eight projects completed since 2016 at the amount of $42.2 million. The rehab projects currently in progress, we are at five projects we're working on, and total investment is $68.4 million. As far as future projects, we have five projects that are planned here in the next two to three years. The total expenditure for those projects will be at around $46.8 million. Now, I'm moving down to water and sewer. That's the standalone rehab projects that are being worked on. The Hickory Well Field Expansion and Water Treatment Plant improvements, that's $61.5 million. Central High School, we've done a lot of pipe replacement or in-place pipe replacement for $808,000. A&amp;M is $4.8 million. Nazworthy Sewer Trunk Main is $25.9 million. There's, the breakdown is there, but you have, the total amount that has been spent on these is about $109 million. Future water and sewer projects, the total cost of future projects is $166 million. That would include the North Concho wastewater improvements, a Concho indirect reuse project, the Randolph to MLK, an 18-inch water line that will be replaced at $5.9 million. The drainage projects, of course, we all know, we had worked for a while there on Avenue P. Harry, I know that you were pretty happy that that got completed. That was a $3.3 million project. Foster Road Outfall Rainage, about $91,000. South Concho Park Drive Drainage, $171,000. Foster Road Low Water Crossing, $75,000. So we've expended about $3.6 million in that arena. Lake Nazworthy improvements, the pier was just completed. If you haven't been out there yet, please go out there and take a look at it. It's a wonderful pier. I see people out there fishing right now. They're really enjoying it. That was at a cost of $842,000. The vegetative control around Lake Nazworthy, we spent about $115,000. The boat ramp improvements, about $7.2 million. That's for about five boat ramps and three non-motorized access points. Some of these monies, of course, we've leveraged through Texas Parks and Wildlife Grants Bear, and we'll continue doing that as well. But we've been very active these past several years, and all these projects, infrastructure projects, will continue being very active. Again, one thing that I do want to note and point out is that we've done all of this without increasing the property tax rate. As a matter of fact, the property tax rate has been reduced, and we'll continue working on these projects. But again, this is just a quick summary. We'll go more in-depth into these projects at our budget workshops.
When will the boat ramps? You talked about $7 million on boat ramps. Are those in the process of being done?
Daniel, this is a public comment period, so you really shouldn't have dialogue regarding your comments at this time.
Okay, so forget I just said anything.
Okay. We'll go into more detail on that in the budget workshop, Mayor, but thank you.
Further public comment? Seeing none, we will now close the public comment section of the agenda for today, and we will move into the consent agenda. Larry, do you want to pull any item from consent?
No, ma'am.
Karen?
No, ma'am.
Lucy?
No, ma'am.
I'm going to pull item B. Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
In the pool.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
With that, may I have a motion for approval of item A, C, and D?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Accepting item B.
Thank you. Any public comment concerning items A, C, or D at this point? Seeing no public comment on items A, C, or D, we will take a vote. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda of A, C, and D, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Item B, consider approving change order number two to RFBES-03-23 Jackson Street Improvement to Reese Albert Incorporated in the amount of $363,043.18 and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Patrick, I'd just like you to explain the additional costs, what has to be done that was not anticipated, and what that will do to help.
When we originally set up the limits for this project, we stopped it at the railroad right-of-way line. So the railroad right-of-way is 100 feet wide from the center of the tracks, 50 feet on each side, but we stopped it at that line because that's technically a tech-stop roadway right there. But when we were work, or right-of-way, when we were working through the project and watching that traffic go over that crossing, it became clear that it's extremely rough. It's not a very good transition. And so as part of the project, we wanted to come in there and fix that transition, similar to what we did on Southwest Drive, so that that's a smooth transition for those vehicles to come across. As part of that, we're going to extend that 12-inch water line that goes underneath there. We're going to case it so that if in the future we have to come in and do anything there, we can just slide another piece of pipe in there. We don't have to disrupt that concrete that we're pouring on there. But it's going to be a full concrete approach on that, so it's nice and smooth and gives any future staff or administration or work a nice clean edge to work up to.
So this dollar amount is within the amount that was originally approved, but it's the contingency amount, so it's not over and above the total amount of the contract. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Other questions for Patrick on this project? Thanks for the explanation.
Actually, I just misspoke. It is not part of contingency. $62,000 is contingency. The rest is coming out of, is increasing the project amount. I'm sorry for that misspelling.
So $62,000 is contingency, and the balance is coming out of money you have in other funds?
It's coming out of the bond funds for that street project. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion for approval?
I move to approve.
Lucy moves, makes a motion to approve item B. May I have a second? Second by Tommy. Public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All of those in favor of approving item B, say aye.
Aye.
None. Opposed. Motion passes seven zero. We will now move into the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and opponents are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is discussion and review on animal services partnership with Concho Valley Paws, and the presentation will be made by the Neighborhood and Family Services Assistant Director Morgan Chagwood, and Concho Valley Paws Executive Director Jenny Wilson. You are on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll be brief. This is in response, as requested at the January 16th council meeting, to come back and have some discussion about our partnership with San Angelo Animal Services and Concho Valley Paws. So I will yield the bulk of my time today to Concho Valley Paws since we had a good discussion last month. And just as a reminder, we do have an annual contract with Concho Valley Paws since 2017, and that goes through an RFP open purchasing process, and it covers items such as adoption, foster, rescue, transfer, emergency, and advanced medical for animals. And to date, over 14,000 animals have been saved through this contract, either through adoption or rescue transfer. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jenny Wilson.
Good morning. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to share Concho Valley Paws with you this morning. Concho Valley Paws has been in existence, actually, since 1961, but in the beginning, we operated under the Humane Society of Tom Green County, and I think that's kind of important to point out, because people often wonder where the Humane Society of Tom Green County plays into this. So it's actually the same entity, but because so many humane societies exist throughout the nation, and they all have different functions, some of them even operate animal control, we thought it was very important to identify ourselves better to our community. And so in 2011, we filed a DBA to operate as Concho Valley Paws, because pets are worth saving. That's our acronym. And so we hope that that helps the community understand that the Humane Society of Tom Green County is not responsible for animal control, ticketing, licensing, things of that nature, but rather we do rescue. And so that's how we became Concho Valley Paws. I've been with the organization for 15 years, and I've seen it grow substantially, and I'm really proud of the work that we do in our community. But I would be remiss if I said that we could do this on our own because we can't. We rely heavily on our community. We're supported by donor dollars and foundation grants. We absolutely could not do what we do in our community without our donors and the support. This is our mission, to reduce the population of homeless pets in the Concho Valley and end the killing of adoptable pets by offering low-cost spay-and-neuter programs, successful adoption programs, transfer programs, and support services for pet owners and education and training. So Concho Valley Paws is known to provide adoption services, but we do so much more. This slide just kind of gives you a quick glimpse into the many programs that we offer. I will dive into some of those here in just a minute. I don't want to bore you or take up a ton of time, but I want to give you a concise yet comprehensive idea of what we provide for our city shelter, but also for our community. So Concho Valley Paws is a 501(c)(3), and what we like to really emphasize to the community is we are a separate entity from animal control, but we work very closely together. So it's easy for those lines to get blurred, because we do step in in a supportive way as often as needed or as wanted by our shelter. We have chosen to work not as adversaries, but in an alliance with our animal control, because we feel that we can focus on a common goal, and that is to save lives. I think that's, it's clear that no one in the position of animal control and animal services wants to see thousands of animals euthanized every year, and neither do we. So that's what we focus our work on together. So how did we get here? I think it's important for us just to take a real brief moment to look at where we started and where we're at now and where we need to go. So prior to 2016, things were very different. As a matter of fact, animal services was even operated under a different department within your city. But at that time, 80% of the animals served by the shelter were euthanized. Texas was one of the high, or San Angelo was one of the highest kill shelters in the state of Texas. So it was a pretty bleak situation for our shelter pets. This is taken from the 2014-2015 Operating Budget, the report that is published by the City of San Angelo. The number of euthanasias performed in fiscal year 2013, before we started doing all this work, was 6,838. Only 14% of the animals served by the shelter was adopted. 76% of them were euthanized, and 8% of them were returned to owners. And it's important to note that that adoption category also contains public adoption as well as rescue pools at the time. Back during this time, rescues had to not only go through the same process as an individual adopting, but we had to wait for the community to have first right of refusal. And sometimes that led to rescues being at the front counter trying to pull animals at the time they're being euthanized. So it was a very convoluted, difficult process to save animals. So with that being said, I think the community and the city management wanted better for our animals, better for our community, and so they were looking for a vendor who could help provide adoptions and get those numbers up, get more animals out of the shelter in hopes of reducing those euthanasia numbers. So in October of 2016, the City of San Angelo issued a request for proposal, that's what we refer to when we say RFP, for a vendor to provide those services. Paws was the only submission, and we were awarded the contract, and we began our services in 2017. Again, this is from the city's operating budget report. You can see what we accomplished during the first year. Fiscal year 17, we saw the number of euthanasias drop to 2,404. That's 49%. So it was a significant drop during our first year of working together. You saw the number of animals adopted up to 34%, and that is a true adoption number, because at this time, we're reporting only public adoptions in that category. And 76% to 49% reduction in euthanasia. And here's where we ended in fiscal year 2022. 4,034 animals were sheltered. Of that, 24% was returned to owner due to the shelter's progressive programs of returning to owner. That also does include 296 cats that participated in our spay-neuter and return program. So we're going to be tweaking these reports as we move forward, too, to give you a better idea of how everything is breaking out. But the percent of animals euthanized or died in custody was down to 15%. So what we're doing is working, but we're obviously not where we want to be yet. I think it's important for us to talk about what a complex problem it is that we face in a post-COVID world. There is actually studies being done right now by the University of Florida that are focusing on the effects of COVID in animal welfare. And unfortunately, it looks like COVID has set us back about 10 years in animal welfare with the work that was done with spay-neuter prior to the country shutting down. So we are in a several hundred thousand deficit of spay-and-neuter surgeries, which has led the entire country to face a population explosion that unfortunately San Angelo is not immune from. But saying all of that, I think it requires a multifaceted approach, and we've talked about that before. It's not just adoption. It's got to be spay-neuter. It also has to be educating our public and cultivating responsible pet owners. So these are some of the programs that I want to pull out and just spend, again, concise but comprehensive as much as possible, so that you have an understanding of what we do and the importance of these programs. We'll start with our SNIP programs, probably what I consider our most important program. It's our spay-neuter initiative program. We provide low-cost spay-and-neuter services utilizing a veterinarian employed by Concho Valley Paws, but also contracting out with local vet clinics. So this is a cost-sharing program. So a, for example, a senior citizen can purchase a cat voucher for $25, but that surgery actually costs us $100. So Concho Valley Paws, with its grant money and donations, will pay that deficit of $75 to the vet. That keeps the cost low for the pet owner and makes that spay-and-neuter surgery accessible to them if they are restricted on funds. We offer approximately 100 vouchers every month. That does vary, because it depends on the availability of space at the clinics that we partner with, and it also varies on funding. In addition to that monthly voucher that we offer, we also seek funding for and offer programs to target problem populations. I hate to put it in that term, but we have a very high population of pit bulls in our shelter, and so we know that is a breed we need to target. So recently, we had just a voucher that was offered to female pits in an effort to get more of those animals fixed. So we will do things like this from time to time as funding allows. Since we've started this process with this, as partners with the city, we have seen over 10,000 shelter pets saved. But even more importantly than saving them, they're fixed. We put them in loving homes, but we also fix them. More than 15,000 owned pets have been spayed or neutered, and more than 3,000 community cats have been spayed or neutered. Emergency assistance is available to people who need it through our compassion fund. This program is very important, because we see a lot of pet owners that have to consider having their pet euthanized for treatable illness or injury, and it's generally injuries that are unexpected. We have helped with animals that have been hit by a car that got out of a yard accidentally. We've helped with animals that have been injured by an intruder. We've helped with animals that have been a victim of domestic violence. So this fund is available to support and help our pet owners, but not only that, this fund helps So this fund is available to support and help our pet owners, but not only that, this fund helps our shelter. Because of this fund, we're able to treat injured and ill animals that arrive at the shelter. Prior to our partnership with the City of San Angelo, these animals would have been euthanized to end suffering, even though their injuries were treatable. And that's because the city has never had a budget for veterinary care in its animal services division. So we step in and we provide that. We fix broken bones. We help with cruelty cases. Like you can see, there's a couple of cruelty cases here. We get them healthy and we get them into loving homes. I think it's important to point out, though, that Contra Valley Paws expended over $205,000 on veterinary care through this program, and that does not include our spay-neuter services. This here is a program that is offered completely free to the City of San Angelo Animal Shelter. Our Second Chance Program is what I consider a fantastic alternative to a pet owner leaving a pet at the shelter. This allows the owner to participate responsibly in the rehoming of their pet. So the pet stays in their home. They register their pet with us as a pet that is available for adoption. We ensure that the pet is spayed, neutered, and vaccinated, and microchipped, and then we promote that pet for adoption, the same as we do pets in our facility and pets at the shelter. It's a very successful program, but it does require that the pet owner participate in it. The nice thing about this program is it keeps pets out of the shelter, and that's what we're all about. And I think it's really important to note that a pet in a home is easier to market and easier to transition into adoption versus a pet that has to go through the trauma of being surrendered at a shelter, especially one that faces crowding. It's just a much better environment for them to stay in their home, and that makes that adoption transition so much easier. Second Chance saves lives and keeps pets out of the shelter, and that's what it's all about. We have had great success with this program. Again, the only issue we have with it is the pet owner has to be willing to participate. When we began working in the shelter, we noticed a very interesting problem. We would see people come in with moms and litters of puppies to surrender them because they couldn't care for them. It was an accidental pregnancy. At that time, we would watch those people go back into the kennels to look and see about adopting another pet. That led us to kind of really have conversations and look into some data that says people that surrender dogs at shelters will get another dog. And so what we've decided to do with this program is come alongside those pet owners and offer them that education and awareness that they're lacking. If they have a relationship with this pet, and they love this pet, and they're bonded with this pet, it makes sense for us to get that pet fixed and help them responsibly rehome those puppies instead of them going and finding another pet, because if they don't qualify to adopt from a rescue or a shelter, they will go get another unaltered pet off of Facebook. So we're just all about trying to break those cycles, and this program helps us to do that. Not only are we getting the mom fixed and putting her back with her owners, she's vaccinated and microchipped, but we're making sure that all of the puppies that she had are spayed and neutered before they're put into homes. So it's much better than a free-to-good-home ad on Facebook where they're getting no vetting at all. So this program is helping us break some cycles. Again, the mommy and me is very beneficial on the adoption end because we're offering cute, healthy puppies that have had an opportunity to stay with their mom because the agreement the pet owner has to make is we will provide the service for you, but you have to keep mom and puppies together until they're naturally weaned. But we will provide all the vet care, the food, and whatever support you need to get us to that point. Help Me Get Home is one that I think most people in San Angelo have heard about. It's a fantastic program. Again, the idea is to keep pets from going into the shelter. It's a free online lost and found program. It encourages neighbors to help neighbors. You see a pet out in your neighborhood, look on Help Me Get Home, see if it's listed as lost. If you have the ability and it is safe, we ask that. Maybe you try to house that pet in your home overnight, hoping that the neighbor will be looking for it in time. It also helps us with education as it promotes microchipping and it promotes callers and tags. And it's also a tool for animal control. So if one of Morgan's guys has picked up an animal, they can also access Help Me Get Home and see if it's listed as lost, get that pet home, and try to avoid the whole shelter intake process. Paws Express, this is something that we hear a lot about. We get a lot of questions, especially when we see a euthanasia list come up. Why don't y'all transport animals out? The quick answer is we do every month. Contra Valley Paws just recently sent 26 dogs to Canada, and we are so happy to do that. The way this program works is we work with communities who have actively, I don't want to say solved their problems, but have definitely gotten on top of the issue of population in their own community. Because they have done that, they have created a demand for an adoptable shelter pet. And so we are happy to provide them animals for adoption. The nice thing about our Paws Express is when we see those dogs loaded up on the transport van or plane or however we get them out of here, we know that they're getting off of that transport and going directly into a home, which is very, very heartwarming. In some cases, they will go into an adoption center. We do not send animals to areas that have their own population crisis. We do not. But it's important to note that COVID changed our world. Without those surgeries that I spoke about earlier, we're seeing population increases throughout the nation. So we used to send thousands a year on transport. Now we're down to, we're lucky to get one transport a month because all of our partners are full. And so it's something that we're constantly looking for new partners to work with, but we want to be responsible in selecting those partners, making sure that we're not creating a problem in any other community. Some of the other things that we do for our community is we provide pop-up clinics, and we enjoy partnering with the City of San Angelo for that. We provide for the microchips. Sometimes, often, the city will provide microchips, but we also pay for the veterinarians to be there to inject the vaccines, and we provide the vaccines through a grant we get through Pet Co. Love. We currently offer these twice a year, but we would love to grow that program and offer them quarterly. I think the more pets we have microchipped, the quicker we can get them out of the shelter. In addition to all the programs that we offer in-house, we often refer out, and we often pay for services to keep pets and people together. We utilize professional trainers here in town. Again, we outsource veterinary care to clinics, anything we can try to do to keep families together. So it's, how are these services offered? Anyone in San Angelo can participate in our services. All that we offer is available on our website. They're also welcome to come and see us at our facility. But we also get referrals from animal control, and I think that's important. This is an important process to explain. If a citizen arrives at the city shelter with a pet that they want to rehome, the first thing they're told is to go through a counseling process with Contra Valley Paws. Because we do offer a plethora of programs, perhaps there's a program we can offer that will assist that pet owner and keep that pet out of the shelter. And so it's called a managed intake. It is not closed intake. We don't want to confuse the two. Managed intake applies to owned pets. So we want to sit down with that pet owner, and let the pet owner tell us what the situation is. Is it that the dog chewed up a favorite pair of shoes? Is it the dog is snapping at another pet? Is it because they can't potty train? What is, is it financial? And then we look at our programs and see what we have to offer them to support them in hopefully keeping that pet. Because again, remember that data that we looked at that says people who have pets will have pets again. So it's better for us to preserve that relationship than to allow them to continue that cycle of getting pets in their care that perhaps are not properly vetted, spayed, and neutered, et cetera. We are committed to helping our community. I think this is very important for us to say. We have aligned ourselves with the city animal shelter because it is our goal to see that our city gets 100% of the donor dollars that is invested in our organization. So we want to make sure that every animal we save is a local pet. We have such a tremendous challenge in our community with this issue that we do not, and we have pledged not to bring pets from outside of our area. Of course, we want to save all animals. But we also feel that we can't help if we're not in a position to help, and we are in no position to help at this point. It is our dream someday that we are the facility accepting transports for communities like we are right now, but we are not there yet. We take every opportunity to encourage adoptions, and we offer low-cost and free events very often. These are some photos of events that we have off-site, so we're not just at the shelter or just at our facility. We often go into Pet Co., Tractor Supply. Lots of businesses host us, and we are happy to have that relationship with our community. These are just a few of the programs that you might have seen that we offer. We do not let an opportunity pass that we can jump on to promote an option, whether it's home for the holidays or celebrating National Pet Week. We even offer $5 Fridays. We have free events, name your own price, anything that you can imagine. We'll take advantage of it to help raise awareness and get pets out of the shelter. But the shelter does have a capacity limit, and when we hit that capacity limit, we rally. And we are so grateful, proud, and blessed that to this day, every euthanasia list that has been issued by the city due to capacity has been cleared with every animal saved placed in a foster home or an adoptive home. And we do that by special events, by waiving fees. And when those fees are waived, keep in mind, that pet still has to be fully vaccinated for adoption, spayed, neutered, microchipped. So Paws absorbs those costs. That's where our donors and our grants come in. We do mass emails, press releases, social media blasts, whatever it takes to make sure everybody in San Angelo knows that there are animals at risk. And it has worked, and our community has come together, and I'm very proud of the fact that they have come together, and we have so far saved them all. When there is a disease outbreak at the shelter, we are there. We are ready to work, whatever that entails. We are all hands on deck. Whether it's an exposure to a toxin like we had a couple of years ago, during that time, we treated the entire shelter at our expense. Every animal in the shelter was treated, and only three pets died. And so that was an amazing success. During that time, the food had to be pulled because we were unsure of the origin of the toxin. And at that time, we provided food for the entire shelter for a month. If there is a parvo outbreak, we're there. We have our own parvo setup at our facility where we transfer puppies with parvo into our facility for care. So basically, we're there to assist and support however we can because we do not want to see these animals euthanized because they don't have access to treatment. And so we're there in a supportive role to the city. And again, this is at no cost to the city. So I wanted to take an opportunity because I know y'all hear from constituents all the time, and there's a lot of misinformation out there. There's a lot of confused people talking. And so I wanted to take the opportunity to just kind of focus on a few of those and give you the facts. Contra Valley Paws allows pets to leave the shelter unaltered. That is a myth. We do not. Every animal that leaves our facility is spayed or neutered, with the exception of animals that are too fragile or young for the procedure. Spay and neuter is key. We believe in that wholeheartedly, and so we abide by that. It's also state law that requires that the animals leaving a shelter must be spayed or neutered. Contra Valley Paws puts pets at risk by offering free adoptions. That is absolutely a myth, and it's one I'm happy to talk about. When I started with our organization 15 years ago, we did home visits. It's taken a lot for us to get to where we are removing barriers for adoption because we also believe that maybe the more we charge, maybe the more work we do behind the scenes, the better guarantee we'll have on that home. It doesn't work that way. We've done this a long time. We've looked at a lot of studies. And there is absolutely, excuse me, no correlation between how much someone pays for an adoption and how valuable that pet is. We will find pets in our shelter, $1,800 puppies that have grown up but surrendered to a shelter. And so, but on the flip side of that, you'll see someone who got a dog from a free adoption, and it is a beloved family member. So there is, there's a ton of data about this. There is, there's a risk to every adoption. The reason there's a, excuse me, the reason there's a risk to every adoption is because we're dealing with people. And so, but we really try to make sure that we do our due diligence. We check IDs. We do check a criminal background, and we do check the shelter records. So if it's anyone who's had an interaction with animal control that is not positive, or if they have a violent criminal record, or if they don't want to give us a driver's license, they don't get to adopt from us. This is something that I've heard a lot. Contra Valley Paws does not allow other rescues to save shelter pets. This is absolutely false. As a matter of fact, we have a one-page contract that we utilize with other rescues, and that contract simply says that that rescue understands that they're pulling an animal free of charge from the City of San Angelo, and that Contra Valley works with the City of San Angelo. We will assist them however possible, but the animal must be spayed or neutered within 30 days, and that is the gist of the contract. We're very, very excited that everyone has signed those contracts, and we actually participate with several local rescues. We even assist some of the smaller local rescues in getting those pets spayed and neutered through our clinic. So everyone is welcome. We would never deny an agency access to save a life. Donor dollars pay staff salaries. First of all, I think it's important to recognize that for an organization that does as much as we do, it's imperative that we have staff to ensure continuity, efficiency, and effectiveness. But we're very blessed that we can say that no local donor dollars goes to our staff salaries. We have been very blessed.
Would you like some water?
Yes.
Could somebody get her some water, please?
Our staff is paid by a private fund specifically for that purpose. So we are fortunate that we do have a paid staff. We can offer that continuity. But the donor dollars, the money you see us raise on Facebook at our fundraisers when we're out looking for assistance with medical care for a pet, all of that 100% goes directly to animal care. Paws Programs has led to the shelter closing intake. Again, that's really important for us to point out. We are a completely separate entity from the shelter. We support them in what they do to save lives, but the shelter sets their own policy on when and how that works. Thank you so much. However, we do provide the managed intake, and we're happy to do that. But it's important for people to understand that managed intake and closed intake are two different things. Managed intake targets owned pets, and we're just asking the owners to look at all options before they surrender a pet.
Take a drink.
Thank you. So now we're able to tell you, the weather's changing.
Allergies are bad right now.
Now, we're able to even help in a bigger way. We're very, very grateful to Judith and David Hurstfeld. They gifted us with an amazing adoption center. Some of you have been out and seen it. If you haven't, I invite you, encourage you to come and see it. Within those walls, we have a spay-neuter clinic and recovery space. We have our hospital that I mentioned for our parvo care and moderate illness. It houses our administration office, our adoption offices. It has pet visitation space and a large training space for us to work with people and their pets and trainers. The Stephen Dog Dorms are now open, and I'm happy to give you kind of a little video walkthrough so you can see our facility. This building is located directly behind the Hurstfeld Adoption Center. We have state-of-the-art kennels. We have state-of-the-art draining. We have a fantastic airflow and recovery system so that we have absolutely awesome air circulation through there to help control smell and bacteria. All the dogs have access to indoor and outdoor space. And we fill this space with shelter pets. So when a pet is adopted from our facility, we just go to the shelter and grab another. But we find that this is allowing us to save even more pets because we are able to give the adopter a smaller environment to experience, so it's not as loud. We have 48 kennels, and at any point, we have 50 to 70 dogs in those kennels because we do co-kennel as appropriate. But it allows our adopters a better adoption experience. They're not having to combat all of the pressures and the noise and the sounds of animal control. They're just adopting. And so it's been, we've seen the adoption numbers increase dramatically over the last three months since we opened. So we're very, very blessed to have that, and we're grateful to the Steve Stevens families for being one of our largest donors to make that happen. Coming soon, we cannot forget about the cats. I think we haven't talked about cats a lot because we have done such, I think, incredible work in our community with spay-neuter, not just Paws, but other rescues doing low-cost spay-neuter for cat colonies. The work the shelter has done to identify colonies that need help. And we're seeing that cat problem. And we're seeing that cat problem start to diminish, and now we're focused on the dogs. But we still have cats that need homes. And if you've ever tried to adopt a cat out that has been in a kennel, it can be a challenge because they're really not interested in the people wanting to visit with them as much as they're interested in getting down and exploring. So this facility will allow adopters to walk into a cageless cat community and sit among the cats and give them a better adoption experience. I think that will generate more cat adoptions as well. So you asked Morgan when she made her presentation back in January what you felt, what she felt the biggest concern was. And we agree with much of what she said, but I think one of the things that we have failed to really be honest and hit on from our perspective is that our biggest problem and concern is people, uneducated and irresponsible pet owners. We have backyard breeders, pet owners who want instant results. I mean, that is, that's the flaw of our society today. And then pet owners who refuse to get their pets spayed or neutered. But if you're going to identify them as our biggest concern, I think it's fair to also identify them as our biggest opportunity. We need more education. We need more awareness, and we are committed to that. We want to cultivate more volunteers, more donors, more advocates, more adopters, but more people who understand that pets are worth saving. It is our goal, and Judith Hurstfeld said it to me before her death, that we want San Angelo to be a better place for pets and the people who love them. And I think that's perfectly said. So what we feel the solutions are from where we sit in animal rescue, we really would like to encourage you to consider, when your budget comes around or a budget amendment, to hire an animal control officer that is specifically to enforce our spay-neuter laws. I think that is probably the most beneficial thing you could do in your positions is to approve that. I think it's important to recognize that even though those tickets are being issued, we're still not achieving compliance. So for example, a ticket is issued, it goes through the court system, that fine is paid. But once the fine is paid, is the pet fixed? Often, you're going to find out that it did not get spayed or neutered in the process. And so they'll be repeat offenders, and they'll end up at the shelter again, unaltered. It is, I can only imagine the nightmare it would be for that to be something that Morgan puts on her current staff. That's why we feel it is imperative that there be someone in that position that does strictly that. And we believe it is important to consider that as a new position. And again, these are just our recommendations from the outside looking in, but we all see that as of, I think the rescue community sees that as a big benefit and might get us moving in the right direction. Another thing we'd like for you to consider is possibly looking at that breeder's permit and revising it. I don't think that it's really necessary for us to approve breeding for dogs that make up 10% of our shelter population or more. But I'll tell you right now, if you go into the shelter, you're primarily going to see German Shepherds, Shepherd mixes, and Pit Bulls. And that's why we end up with these euthanasia lists, because in our community, we are home to college students, military, senior citizens, and apartment dwellers, renters. And that makes that pool of adopters very small for these large breed dogs. So we have more large breed dogs in our community than we can house. So I think it's very important for us to take a look at that and perhaps put some stricter ordinances in place on breeding to prevent the breeding of those breeds. And then we also would like for you to consider joining our efforts for spay-neuter. If there's ever an opportunity to throw money at something, I think spay-neuter is the direction you need to put it in. We are doing all we can. We will continue to write grants. We will continue to seek donations. But if, if the city wants to come alongside with us and beef that up, I think that that would be a huge step in the right direction. So having said all that, I just want to thank you. I know I've taken up a lot of your time, but it was important for me and our organization that you get a better understanding of what we're doing and how we're working with our city. I hope that maybe that will empower you as you speak to your constituents. And I want to let you know that we welcome and encourage an open dialogue between you and Contra Valley Paws directly. We welcome any of your questions. And even more than that, I would love to see you come and tour our new facilities and get a feel for what we're doing and how we're trying to work with our community and make San Angelo a better place for pets and their people.
Thank you. I'm going to open up the floor for comments or questions from council. I'm going to start with Larry. Do you have comments or questions you would like to ask?
Do you have any figures on the feral cat release back on the colonies out there?
Well, I know that we did over, we did close to 300 spay-neuter in returns last year just in our clinic, and that does not include our community cat vouchers that we provide. So as far as getting a number on how many feral cats we have there is a, there is a formula that they will tell you to use, that some of the professionals tell you to use. It's really hard to get a good figure. So what we have started to do at Contra Valley Paws is if you have a colony, if you can fill out, it's called a community cat survey. And that gets us a number of cats that you're taking care of on your, on your colony, and how many of those cats are already fixed, and how many of them need to be fixed. And then the other question is, do you know, and not everyone does, if they're male or female? Because what we're trying to do at this point is target those females with the funding that we have first. So to give you a hard data on the number of ferals in our community, I mean, it's kind of, they say anywhere from 125,000 to 200,000. I mean, it's just different depending on how you apply that metrics. We're just taking them as they come, come in. But I will tell you, I don't know about you and your constituents, but the number of calls that we get on cats has drastically decreased over the last three years.
I'd also like to thank you for the work you did. Christmas holidays, you saved 25 dogs, as I recall.
Yes, sir. And we had another list in January that we were, there was 25, and I think there were 16 in January that made it on the euthanasia list, but we were able to clear that list as well. So thank you for saying that. But it's our community, you know? It makes me feel good to know that our community will rally and step up.
Karen?
Thank you for your presentation, Jenny, really thorough. I'm curious if you would share with us how you select shelter animals for adoption through Paws?
Okay, so like I said, we have the, we have 48 kennels. And what we do when a kennel becomes open, we go and look and see who we think is, there's a couple of things we look at. Of course, we look at adoptability, but we also look at a dog that may or may not be declining. We may give them an opportunity to move over to a less stressed environment. Because I don't know how familiar you may be, but when you have a dog kennelled over a period of time, some of them will have serious psychological reaction to that, others will not. And so we do look at that as well. We also look at breed because we only have so many large kennels in our facility, so we will try to get some of those medium-sized dogs in there as well. We also try to get a good selection of breeds represented. We don't want to fill up our entire adoption center with pits because we find that people will come into the shelter and look and see that it's predominantly pits, and they will leave. We want them to come in and see a couple of different kinds of faces so that they will, if they don't find one they want to adopt then, that they will come back. There's a little bit of marketing psychology that goes behind our, our process to choose as well. But we do give priority to ones that we think might be showing some decline because we don't want them to get, we don't want them to move from adoptable to not adoptable.
Speaking of marketing philosophy and strategy, I think we're all familiar with the charming photos. This is, this is Spot. Spot's good with children, also good with cats. Spot would like to be the family's only dog and so forth and so on. A little story, a charming photograph or video. Do you feel that that strategy works? I know that you use it from time to time and that you have a talented photographer and videographer on your staff.
I think, you know, I think it's like anything in our community. You're going to get people's attention in different ways because we're all different. I think that sometimes the sad, urgent cries for help works and gets people in. But I also think that if you do too much of that, people become desensitized to it. But also, I think it's real important for us to promote the dogs for who they are. There is already that misconception in the community that shelter pets are broken, and these dogs are not. They're so resilient. They may not love being in a shelter, but they are resilient. You get them out of the shelter, and they become incredible companion animals. So I think it's finding the right balance. We have to tell the sad stories sometimes because, one, it's the truth, but two, it also touches people differently. Some people can hear that, and it, it calls them to help and get involved. Some people will hear that kind of thing and turn away from it because it's a lot to take in and digest. So I think we have to kind of go at it at a variety of ways.
So it's your belief that the, creating the story for the pet is sad?
No, I think we tell their story because it shows their strength. We just don't want, and we don't know all their stories.
Right.
We're fortunate to know some of them.
I think I'm talking about how it can, it can be engaging, for example, instead of seeing a photograph, because you can look at all of the shelter animals.
Yes.
They're all in there. They may just have a number and a brief description, and they're like little mugshots. And the difference between that and what Macy does for you, for example, is hugely different. They're charming, and they're, the animals are indeed engaging in a different way. You can imagine yourself, you think, oh, Spot might be perfect for my family.
Exactly. Showcase their potential.
I think I'm struggling to understand if that's a strategy that you think can be overused. I think you've implied that.
I think it can be. Again, I just think you can reach people at different places. I think the, the more in-depth story of the struggles and the overcoming adversity in the canine world is very motivating for some adopters. And I think other people will look at that and be afraid that that dog might be reactive because of what that dog may have been through. And so we like to, we like to tell their stories, but we also like to show their potential.
Any more? Lucy?
Yes, Jenny, thank you for the presentation as well. You showed us all these programs, and they sound great. And you would think this takes care of our problem, but it doesn't. Somehow, this problem is still ongoing, and you gave me the answer to the main reason, pet owners. So it's like we've got all these great programs available, but the people are not taking advantage of it. So I see that. I don't know how you're going to be able to bring these people together to actually have these animals spayed and neutered. My other question is, when you adopt these pets or when you get them adopted, do you have a high percentage of people that return these pets?
No, we actually have about a 3% return rate on average, and that's lower than a lot of other communities because we, we have also kind of found our own balance with adoptions. You can look at what some other communities do, and it's literally, you like this dog sign here. We don't want to do too much background work, but we don't want to not do any background work. And so I think we have found a good balance for our community that we do a little bit of an interview, a conversation, how are you going to take care of this pet? What are you looking for? That's really what we do more than anything is help them identify what they want in a pet, especially when we're dealing with someone who's had a pet of 14 years and they are coming to adopt for the first time. It's important to really have that discussion and say, you know, you're taking home a, a different pet, and this is going to be a different experience. And so it's those kinds of conversations that we, that we have. So we're seeing an average of about 3% return, but the returns make, sometimes they don't make any sense, just like the reason they ended up at the shelter doesn't make any sense. It comes down to the commitment of the person and the pet owner. I know you're not supposed to compare children and animals, but I have adopted both, and it's a lot of the same thing. You have to be committed going into doing this. If we turned our children away the minute they did something wrong, like we do our animals, we would be in really bad, really bad shape. So it goes down to what the pet owner's willing to do.
You also mentioned that you felt that hiring an animal control officer would help us, but you also said that no pet leaves the shelter without being spayed and neutered. Okay, so I was a little confused when you said that these officers give them tickets.
Yes, I can see where you're confused. So no, a pet that is adopted, per state law, does not leave the shelter unaltered. I don't want to speak, I'm not, I'm not animal control, so I don't want to speak to that other than to tell you that I don't know that that's the case for owners, for pets that are redeemed as far as state law. Now, we have a city ordinance that says your pet must be fixed. So at that time, I believe Morgan issues the ticket when the pet is redeemed. So it's adopted animals, they do not leave the shelter unaltered. If a pet is redeemed, that's another, that's another story.
So Morgan, can you answer this question for me? Do we, whenever they leave the animal shelter, are they not spayed or neutered?
Right. So we, we, we didn't have this discussion publicly, but we had a memo out last year that defined that, yes, state law mandates all adoptions have to be spayed and neutered. City ordinance, and that is the municipal government's responsibility to do so, and we contract that out to Paws. City ordinance says owners have to spay-neuter their pet. And so if an owner arrives at the shelter to claim their pet from lost and found, we are, pets are property as defined by Texas state law. We're prohibited from withholding their pet from them for any reason except the most extreme where a court order would be issued. And so people leave with their unaltered pets and a citation for unaltered. If they provide an exemption or proof of compliance, then we move forward. It's the animals that leave with a ticket and never provide an exemption or proof of compliance, or those animals were interacting within the field. We're also citing, you know, dogs and cats that have never been to the shelter, but we were at your house for another unrelated issue. You're still getting a ticket for failure to spay-neuter. But the continued follow-up of, you know, if you get, for example, a speeding ticket, and then you go to the municipal court, you make your plea, you pay your fine, whatever, however you choose to proceed with that ticket, that doesn't mean you're never going to speed again. It just means you dealt with that offense from that date. So if you get a ticket for failure to spay-neuter, but you never resolve, the pet's still being intact, still not being spayed and neutered, then there's a continued violation that this officer, as proposed, would continue to follow up with.
So like the court, and I don't know if you would know this or not, but the court doesn't say, okay, you have this fine, but once you alter your pet, then we're okay? They don't ask for proof of the dog being, or the pet being altered?
No, I believe it's, it's animal services' role to, to prove compliance. It's the court's role to process the complaint as filed with them for that day for that offense.
They don't have to prove that day when they pay the fine that their pet is now altered?
They could, but there's, and, and they could potentially have the ticket forgiven or something like that. But in the event that someone either fails to appear, it doesn't ever appear for that ticket, or that person gladly pays the fine, I plead guilty, my dog's unaltered, I'll pay the fine, or ask for a jury trial, anything like that. All of those are options of how to proceed with the ticket. None of them get the pet altered.
Thank you. Carrie?
Yes, just real quick, I want to say thank you to Jenny because I think this will keep some of the phone calls down that we get on, on dogs, cats, other pets, whatever the case may be. The one question I have is, how many dogs do you average a month adopting out of your facility?
It's anywhere from 100 to 125. Before COVID, it was better. COVID has changed, has changed our world, but I will say that we have seen adoptions start to, to uptick. The economy is, is the issue. I mean, we saw a huge increase in the amount of dog food, cat food, vet care has gone up. So I think responding to that inflation, I think a lot of people were like, we're not getting a pet right now, but we're starting to see, I'm hoping, that trend change.
Thank you.
Tom?
I want to pass an opportunity up, but a lot of time I read and hear people complaining about, and this is pets that are outside, people that got bit one thing. I will say, as a council member whose wife has been bitten twice on my own street, the reply and the response has been absolutely outstanding. Now, the fact that they had to listen to my wife, that's on them. It is what it is. But I will say, they showed up, they handled the pet, they quarantined the pets, they did that. I mean, there are things that go on. It's hard, and you have to realize there's only a certain number of people that can respond to these events and happen. But it's everything that I've researched and done and personally experienced, you know, they, they don't know who I am. They didn't- You know, they they don't know who I am, they didn't know who my wife was. There was just a citizen called in and they got bit, they were out jogging, here's what happened. It was all handled perfectly fine. And I get these raving emails and accusations and complaints, and I get that. But there's only so many people that can handle so many calls. And I just want to say, the group has done an outstanding job. There's going to be times when we can't do it as good as we want to, but we get that. I mean, we've all got enough common sense to understand it's not going to be perfect 100% of the time. You showed today a plethora of things out there that people aren't aware are available. And they need to use those, they need to do the research, and I thank y'all for doing what you do.
Well, Tom, I would say your wife must be very attractive because she's gotten two dogs after her already.
I sometimes say those dogs have a good judge of character, you never know, all right?
Tommy.
Well, maybe we need to go ahead and tell Mr. Thompson goodbye because we may never see him again after today. Um, I too want to thank you, Jenny, for your presentation and for what you do. Question I have is, some of the emails and calls I have received have focused on the chip, I'm going to call it process. Is there something we could do in conjunction and partnership with you all to make the chip process a more um, robust process with more information? Um, I really don't know how to ask the question other than make it a better process um, for tracking, et cetera. Is is there something that that we should look at that we're not doing?
Well, I I know Morgan's got some things that she has shared with me that she has planned, and I'll let her speak to that. But I will tell you some things that we've seen work in other communities. But first, every animal that is adopted, that chip is registered to the information they they gave us. Where we run into problems is when that information changes and that person hasn't updated the chip. Um, that seems to be the crux of it, and how do you fix that? I mean, I don't I don't know. But we do have like Westlake Hardware, uh, several of my volunteers have microchip readers. I think all of animal control officers have microchip readers. So that those those pets that are chipped and they have that information, they can get back home directly. Um, but as far as maintaining that and keeping it accurate, that falls back on that responsible pet owner. And how do we make that happen? I I wish I had an answer.
Is there an, perhaps an ombudsman um, that exists already that could be the, let's just call it the final stop? If everything that the pet owner has provided yields nothing in terms of information, is there an ombudsman situation where that could go to, I don't know, a central clearinghouse or something like that? So that they would then call PAWS City Shelter as opposed to everybody just throwing up their hands and saying, well, we don't have any more information, they didn't give us much. Is there something that exists like that?
Yes, so with our chips, when we do an adoption, um, and I'll let Morgan speak to when she chips in her clinics. But when we do an adoption, we are listed as the secondary, we're listed as the implant facility and a secondary contact. And so if they're not able to get good numbers, then they can call us and then hopefully we might have something. We try to get additional contacts in our database when we do the adoption. So hopefully, maybe we'll have a way to get in touch with that pet owner. It's when that pet owner has given the pet away that we really, you know, we're kind of stuck. Um, but I'll let Morgan speak to how she handles that there.
So Contra Valley PAWS in the city of San Angelo use the same brand of microchip. Um, and we're real big fans of the brand of microchips that the both of us use. Um, meaning that there's no annual fee and we're your local office that has implanted it and registered it. That that's a lot of the frustration we see is someone bought a microchip, they had it implanted in their pet, and the owner was handed, here's how you register your microchip. And if you're someone that is very computer savvy and sits at a a computer and has lots of access, then that's probably pretty easy. But a lot of the customers that that we're supporting and working with have maybe a smartphone in their pocket, but not much more than than that. So we we do register that microchip on behalf of the owner. Uh, PAWS does as well with all of their adoptions. Um, and we um, and we're your local implant facility. We actually had a pet come into the shelter on Tuesday, um, and she was microchipped by our facility. And um, all efforts to reach out to the owner were a dead end. Um, so we do have an ombudsman, if I could borrow the term, uh, with a group called Lost Dogs of Texas, where they do microchip dead end follow-up. And they have access to databases to really continue to reach out to folks and say, look, your pet's at the shelter. Um, we we've got to get that animal back to you. And so we had done that outreach and we have a lot of success with that when it reaches to that level. Um, but for this one, it just, it was moving so quickly that by Friday, actually, I got um, a message from the owner. Um, she had moved from San Angelo in early 2022. Uh, the week she was moving, her dog was stolen out of her backyard, and she had moved to the Panhandle in Texas. And she said, I never had any anticipation I'd see this dog again, but lucky me, the microchip still registered to me. It's uh, it's just the phone number was a dead end. And I said, you know, she said, I contacted my vet clinic about getting it updated. I said, we're your, we're your people. Um, you you bought it from us, you registered it with us. And so we love that for San Angeloans because we're an easily accessible um, office by, you know, phone, email, walk-in traffic. But also, if you've moved to the Panhandle, we're still, we're still the the person for this dog. And so we got updated microchip information um, for this pet. I was actually traveling to Big Spring and I said, do you know what? I'll meet you, I'll meet you halfway. And and we met and we we got the dog transported over to her. Um, and the dog was spayed, current with all other items. Um, she hadn't seen the dog in two years and the dog was so excited to see her and her kids. I mean, a totally different animal than what we had in in the shelter. So we believe that microchips work. We believe our microchips specifically work because there's no annual fee that if it lapses, they don't release your information. Um, and we do reach out that when all efforts are exhausted, we reach out to that Lost Dogs of Texas group and see um, a lot of of their efforts bear fruit in somebody that has blocked us, somebody who has cursed us out, somebody who is not coming in the door. Lost Dogs of Texas can get that person, they walk in and say, I'm here to get my dog. And we, you know, professionally handle the transaction. Um, but all our efforts had not yielded that response to date.
Good, thank you.
All right, so my questions um, are the following. So um, as it relates to the court system, we, they pay a fine, they go home, but they don't have to prove anything at the court. So I'm going to pay my fine, my citation, I'm going to take my animal, and I'm not going to have it spayed or neutered. And that's the ordinance that allows that, or the law that allows that.
They get cited again. When my office was working with people who have not spayed or neutered their pets, one of the comments we got often was, well, I already paid my fine. And it was like, yeah, that was for that day. So they get cited again and then and they'll continue to get cited until they do show proof of spay and neuter.
So how do we do that follow-up? Because obviously it requires a lot of follow-up. It's one thing to say it, it's another to do it, and that is follow-up and make sure that that has happened.
Um, Morgan can speak more currently, but last year, Daniel authorized a part-time position in my office that was dedicated solely to following up on the backlog of those citations. Um, and she reached out and she managed to close a number of cases. I think Morgan has since taken over that same process we developed in my office with her own staff.
And do we need to re- rethink the dollar amount for this citation? Because money talks, and I just wonder if the fine attached to not having it spayed and neutered is appropriate relative to the problem?
We are limited in the the amount of fine that we can put on top of a citation by the Texas Local Government Code, but we can see where it is and see if it's um, can be raised at all. Um, there's also, you know, to the discretion of the court to raise the lower fines as well as prosecutor. So um, just because a fine is set at $500 does not mean that every citation is going to be $500.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We're having regular meetings with Karen on some of these issues. And we came to that same conclusion last week. We are going to follow up with the court and see what latitude exists for solutions. Uh, part of the solution may be dollar values, but there may be some process solutions that the court is capable of. We just don't know, and so we're going to ask if they have s- uh, suggestions for for what a a solution would look like. Part of the solution, the optimal solution, would be a minimum number of contacts. In other words, we don't have to follow up three times and hire staff so that we can follow up three times. Is there a way through the first contact and the process at the court to uh, be assured that a solution is achieved? The ultimate solution being the alteration of the animal. It's, we're not really pursuing revenue at the court. We're we're pursuing the solution for for this animal. And so we're going to open that conversation with the court, see what kind of latitude we have and and their ability to help us with those solutions. And uh, we'll go from there.
So I have, uh, my sister and brother-in-law took in one of my cats when I changed locations where I lived. And unfortunately, that cat got out, and this is in Midland, Texas. Cut, the cat got out, it was picked up by Animal Services. And they would not release that cat back to my brother-in-law until he had completed training. Just wonder what we do. Because they required it, he could not have that cat back in his possession until he had attended these night classes or whatever. So it's just an idea, a thought. Because obviously, as you mentioned early on, the problem is people. And what we need to do is find a way to communicate more loudly and aggressively about the responsibility of a pet. Number one, do you know how much it will cost you annually to have a pet in your home? Are we clear about that dollar amount? Dollars always speak, and what we hear a lot is people give them up because of the cost. What's the cost of annual veterinarian? What's the cost of food? What's the cost of all those things? We need to make sure we're communicating loudly and clearly the cost of owning a pet. I also want to know if there is a way to limit the number of permits, as you brought up earlier, by breed. Because if pit bulls, pit bulls are a big issue for us, can we limit the number of new permits issued every year?
First to speak to your, your suggestion about a class. I believe Contra Valley PAWS has offered that in the past. So similar to the example where if you get a speeding ticket, you could also plead no contest and take a defensive driving um, class. Um, Contra Valley PAWS has offered to stand up like a responsible pet ownership class, and we just couldn't get it tied to that in the court system. But it's something we can, you know, review again for the um, I'm sorry, remind me of your second question.
Well, I'm just saying, the the second question was limiting the number of permits by breed. If our number one problem is pit bulls.
Yeah, I think.
Can we limit the number of permits issued?
I can request a a legal review. There had been previous um, statewide legislation that no breed-specific legislation can be passed. But I think if it's a, so I would want to know the nuance of of what that covers, of of what can be um, considered for that process.
Because the state and other states have had a major issue with overabundance of animals, I would think that the courts would be looking at some means to control this issue. Perhaps it's changed, perhaps it isn't, but perhaps we need someone to take to the legislators of a bill a concept of enough is enough. Very much encourage communication. Did you know, as I brought that up a minute ago, did you know your pet will cost you this amount of money on an annual basis? Did you know that a dog's performance and character and the way it reacts to people and children is a owner's responsibility? Pets aren't born with meanness in their bodies. People t- uh, teach them to be aggressive and mean.
And that is a conversation we have when people are considering rehoming their pets. If they disclose that it does have aggression in the home or a bite history, we do calmly communicate that it it sounds like maybe the last step of your responsible pet ownership for this animal is um, having that pet euthanized. And if there is a concern for safety in the home or transporting it, we do offer transport services where we confirm your appointment. We meet you at your home, we transport that pet to the vet. That when, when you own an aggressive animal and it's gotten out of hand, the answer's not the shelter. The tough answer is, this is my pet, I have to do the final, you know, right thing for my household in this community by euthanizing it.
And we do not take into our shelter animals or people who live in the county, correct?
Correct.
And how do we make sure of that?
Uh, we require proof of residency for intake, and that can be um, a current valid driver's license, a piece of mail, proof of insurance, just something showing residency in San Angelo city limits.
I'm assuming that many of the pets that are dropped off into our community are from the county. People come in, bring them in from the county and think no one's going to know. How do we better communicate outward that if you live in the county and you dump your animals into our city, there will be a fine?
I don't know by what mechanism there would be a fine. If there's an untagged, unchipped animal that we pick up.
Dogs and could get a driver, I mean, a, what do you call it, a license plate, that we could figure that out.
It's already, it's already in the penal code, it's already in the penal code and um, I'm sure Teresa knows more than about this than I do, but that it's unlawful to um, abandon, unreasonably abandon an animal. So I don't know that, I mean, we, when we see it happen in the county, we we call the sheriff because it's unlawful. Um, when it's done at our facility, we call the police department because it it's unlawful to to abandon an animal.
How many of those a year do we make, those calls?
I can, I don't, we, two, three dozen a year for us. Um, the outcome is never what I would like it to be, but I'm kind of a stickler for that. Um, but, you know, we we do report it when we see it, and we have it posted on our facility, that it is unlawful to abandon an animal. Um, and when people come in and they are trying to bring an animal to us that we don't have space for because the shelter's full and we're full and all the other rescues are full, and they say, well, we're just going to dump it. And we're like, well, if you do that, then we will report it to the police department because as you can see right there, it's in the Texas penal code that it is unlawful. But I think it's um, I think it's a misdemeanor. Um, I would like for them to put more teeth into that as well, but that's that's the state level.
The misdemeanors at the state level?
I I believe so, in that case.
I can look it up, but our court does handle Class C misdemeanors. Um, so we do probably have some of those. I can look that up though. But I think they're right that, I mean, there is legislation already in place, some statutes already in place that allow us to do what you're asking. That's not the hard part of it. The hard part is identifying the person, providing PD enough information, and then PD finding them um, and to be able to prosecute those tickets, so.
Again, I think it's an issue of communication. How are we communicating outwardly that if you do these things, this is the price you pay? Did you know? We have, it's, you know, for the people that are well acquainted with the your organization, et cetera, it, the great results. But obviously, there's still so many people who are ignorant to the fact of what happens in this community with unwanted pets and far too many of them. It's a major issue. And we, it's great, we're getting our hands around it and and programs around it and improving the statistics as it relates to this, but the job is not done.
No.
And the communication has to get more aggressive and out there for people to better understand what's going on.
I I think, I'll just tell you from from our perspective, looking at this, and um, we're primed and ready, and it is in our our yearly plan to do a lot more education and a lot more awareness. Um, but at the end of the day, I think it's going to take people seeing someone have to go through this process. I mean, it's like, they need to know that there is a consequence to these actions. And it needs, I think they need to know that in a way that's greater than us just telling them. I would love to have an opportunity where we saw one go through the court system and there was, um, there was a penalty that someone was penalized in some way, and we could use that as a, as an example. But we're not seeing that enforcement. And I'm not just, that's just kind of through the sheriff's department, the police department. It's kind of like the animal issue is kind of the lowest. I know they have so, this is not a criticism. They have so much that they deal with. Um, but that's kind of where we are, is that enforcement's kind of on the bottom rung, it feels like, when we're looking at these issues. Because like I said, we've called and reported. Um, and I know that some have made it to the DA's desk, but the, or I should say county attorney's desk, but I've never seen anything get past that point on these abandonment issues.
You know, the city has many responsibilities. Um, and we put a lot of money towards our responsibilities towards the citizens. We can't keep throwing more dollars and more people after the problem. The budgets just don't allow it. And it's great to say more people's going to solve it, but you know, we keep doing this and the problem isn't solved. So throwing people and dollars after the problem isn't going to solve it. Communication might solve it, consist- Communication might solve it, consistent communication, consistency in that. We've got to get it out there because the city doesn't just have more money to keep throwing at the problem. We're spending a tremendous amount of money to improve the facility of the animal shelter. Close, close to $2 million this year and a half for next year, right? So more and more and more is not going to happen. We've got to have a program about communication and enforcement. Those are the two big challenges, communication and enforcement. And I believe strongly that your presentation today was very thorough. It was terrific. I think it should educate a lot of people about, as you say, the myths and those, the false myths and the reality. We need to keep this up. Many people watch Council on Channel 17. But we need to use our public information offices more aggressively. I suggest you all need to be more aggressive about communicating. We have to make sure everyone's aware of the responsibility of pet ownership. Because it's not on the city. We can't keep throwing money and dollars.
Mayor, I do want to point out that I think the majority of our citizens are responsible pet owners. It's always that select group, you know, that doesn't, they're not responsible, but it causes the issues. So it's not right for the majority of the taxpayers to be paying for additional monies for the shelter because a group is not doing what they're supposed to be doing. So I, I agree with that. I think that we have budgeted, we have put money toward it. And it goes back to, it does go back to education. It goes back to making people understand that this is your responsibility. And again, I don't want the people that are listening, because there's a lot of great individuals that are responsible or doing their thing. It's just that, that few that causes and exacerbates the problem. So hopefully, with a good educational program, we can get that out there with a good system in place to find and make sure those individuals, we hold their feet to the fire. That's, it's going to have to be the way that, that we go with that.
So I just want to finish my comments, and that is, thank you for the work that you are, both of you are doing. This is an emotional issue, it's a complicated issue, and it's an issue that doesn't get solved overnight. But I believe strongly that both of you women are doing a terrific job of leading the programs and the responsibilities attached to what you're doing. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you for saying that.
I'm, I'm proud of the work that's being done, but it's not over and it will never be over. So we got to continue to look at the next challenges attached to this. And I believe strongly it's communication and enforcement, those two things.
Mayor-
Yes?
Uh, I just wanted to ask, I have this, um, I had this memo that stated that y'all were going to have the Animal Service Open House. How did that go on February the 7th?
We're hosting it weekly.
Your continuing, did you have people that showed up?
Yes, so the February 7th Open House was, I believe, well-attended, a good contingency from Contra Valley Paws. Key council members attended, and we appreciate that support. We had about two dozen members of the public come through. And so we'll continue that weekly. We'll also start hosting special events with them. And so we'll have like a check-the-chip type event where, I believe my pet's microchipped, but I don't know if their information is current or I don't know what the microchip number is. We'll also have a microchip clinic type event where you can bring your pets in and, and have that microchip implanted right there. So we wanted to hit it hard with weekly open houses. We anticipate scaling back at some point. We just, we, A, wanted to have a, a really clear venue for communication for folks that had concerns and questions and ideas. So that when folks approach you, you can say, look, Morgan has an open house. Let's, can we try to address it at that level? I, I would definitely get involved. I hear you, I want to make sure that this is handled. But there are resources to try to get this handled in a way that is tough to have dialogue, like in a public comment and an open meeting like council. So we wanted to open up this venue. And we will host that through the summer weekly. And then we'll reassess, you know, does it need to be scaled back or, or what, what kind of changes might happen? But yeah, we're, we're continuing that and we'll have another one to mark 5:00 PM at Animal Services.
I think that's a great idea. And I'd like to let the constituents know that are watching. This is the perfect place for them to go with their concerns, with their complaints, and their solutions. Mainly, if you've got solutions, let y'all know. But I think this is a great program.
Thank you. And we're, we're going to be getting y'all monthly updates. So we launched that first week in February, first week of March, I'll get you an update of about this many people attended, about this many, um, these were, these were the major topics of concern because we want to be responsive to y'all that we're, you know, trying to address things at our level.
Thank you.
One last moment for anybody else to make a comment. And if there are no other questions or comments, thanks again for the thorough presentation, for the professionalism behind the presentation and Morgan for the work that you're doing. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie has a, a question or comment.
How long do I get?
Three minutes.
All right. Jackie Chestnut, live in the county of Tom Green, not in the official city of San Angelo. I have lots of comments about this topic. I didn't know y'all were so unhappy with us Tom Green County people. First of all, I wish I had had enough attention paid to the fact that my husband was abducted into this town with $4 million of my assets. Police didn't care, sheriff didn't care, county attorney, city attorney didn't care, district attorney didn't care. So good luck with your dogs. Okay. I've been a dog person my entire life, supported the Humane Society. I'm a '70s girl, big on the Humane Society. I've adopted animals, I've raised animals, I did wildlife rescue of fawns for many, many, many years. That's one of the things I do on my ranch. So this is near and dear to my heart. The past three dogs I have adopted have come from the San Angelo City Shelter. And it's a vile place, a nasty place. My last, most recent dog Einstein that I have now, I adopted two years ago from that nasty little shelter. Poor baby was in abuse. He'd been kept in a cage after he'd been hit by a car and his whole back end is off. And I got him all straightened out with Dr. Womack, who was kind enough to do that, but I adopted him there. So, um, I've adopted, like I said, my last four animals, actually from the shelter. Two of the dogs I have wandered up out in the county. I have four cats that wandered up out in the county, and I've had all those fixed. Because I'm a responsible pet owner. And you can't change, people are irresponsible when it comes to animals, and you can't fix it. And you can't change it, and you can talk all you want, but it's the way they treat their animals and the way they treat their people and the way they treat their, all the other things. It's a human problem. Animals are not possessions. And they should be treated with respect and dignity like humans. Because they are animals and we take them on to raise and care for. Okay. Maybe we should offer a dog abuse list like we do a sex offender list if we want to keep people from re-adopting animals that they've abused or disposed of before as nothing, which we do with women all the time, we throw them aside. Let me back up to my first comment, the appropriate, that comment that was made about your wife and her looks and being bit by dogs and her reaction to that and comment, that was so inappropriate after a 30-minute, 40-minute discussion on dogs. And her response to that and how, what did you say? Had to listen to your wife? Please, sir, that was so inappropriate. And that her being bit had something to do with her looks. So all that was very inappropriate. And, excuse me, if particular care and attention is not paid to the ladies, we are determined to form a rebellion and will not hold ourselves bound by any laws in which you have no voice or representation. So please, don't make comments like that, especially when we're talking about dogs.
My name is Siney, and I'm on the board for Contra Valley Paws. And I want, there's a couple of things. I want to reinforce that spay neuter is the answer and enforcement of spay neuter. I also believe like you that communication is a big factor. But I want to encourage that, I know you said no more money being thrown out. But I think the position, hiring a position to specifically enforce the breeder's permit and the spay neuter would help pay for itself in the end, because you're going to be housing fewer animals once that's enforced. Secondly, I want to invite you all again to come out to the facility and see. To date, I think Karen Hesse-Smith is the only one that's been out there to see the facility. Okay, and I think it just, for the two of you, the rest of you all, I want to encourage that you come and see. It's one thing to see it on video, it's one thing to see pictures, it's another see, thing to see it enforced. Another thing that I would like to consider is for you all to review the dog food that is being fed at the shelter. The ingredients has a heavy dairy ingredient. It's, dairy's very heavy on the ingredients. And that's going to be a good reason for dogs to have diarrhea and bloat and all of that, which will contribute to the difficulty of keeping kennels clean. Dairy is not good on either dogs' or cats' system. And the ingredients, it's very heavy in the list on the food that's being fed. That's all, thank you.
Thank you for those comments, for the public comment. All right, seeing none, we will conclude this presentation and discussion on the regular agenda. I'm going to suggest that we take a break. And I'm also going to suggest that Item B, which is going to be up next, there is a display of this art out in the lobby, right? And if you have a chance, please walk through it and see it. And they'll answer some questions for you out there. So if you could do that while you're taking a break, it would be great. We're calling this meeting back to order at 10:27. And we are going to move into Item B, which is consider a resolution supporting the private fundraising efforts to create and place art-themed quote, Black Tie Cowboy along the Chadburn Streetscape from the North Concho River to the intersection of Beauregard Avenue. And Carl White, you're here, but I know that Julie's in the audience to add comment and answer questions. But I think everyone had a, an opportunity to look at the artwork out in the lobby area. And so let's get going.
Visual Arts Capital of Texas and Art in Uncommon Places aims to keep it that way. And in my opinion, San Angelo is the visual arts capital of Texas in big part due to Art in Uncommon Places. This morning, we were asking council to adopt a resolution that will authorize Art in Uncommon Places to create and place at their cost and effort, a series of works entitled Black Tie Cowboy along the, the new Chadburn Streetscape from basically the Concho River north to the Beauregard intersection. Before I point out the key elements of this resolution, I want to emphasize that the concept for this proposal has been well-vetted. It, it was initially proposed to the Public Art Commission, followed by two meetings of a subcommittee of the Public Art Commission composed of a few members of the commission, Art in Uncommon Places staff, city staff, and downtown San Angelo Incorporated staff. It was then reviewed a second time by Art in Uncommon Places, who recommended the proposal move forward. It has most recently been reviewed by the Design and Historic Review Commission, as well as city staff some more. And now to the resolution, the key points of the resolution are, Art in Uncommon Places will bear all cost of creating and placing the art in the public right-of-way. Art in Uncommon Places will transfer ownership of the art to the city upon completion. All plans for the project shall meet all city requirements and be approved by the Director of Planning and Development Services and the city engineer prior to placement of any piece of art within the public right-of-way. The city manager is authorized to negotiate and execute an agreement with Art in Uncommon Places to ensure proper authorizations of the project and to accept the project upon completion. The key points of such an agreement would be, the city shall provide input and direction into placement of the art from designated city personnel to ensure that the art doesn't impede travel along the sidewalks and complies with all ADA and traffic control and sight distance requirements, as well as any other applicable regulations. Upon final completion of the art and transfer of all ownership of the art to the city from Art in Uncommon Places, this city shall be solely responsible for all ongoing maintenance related to the project and have the sole discretion to remove or relocate all or part of the art as the city deems necessary. All authority related to the future maintenance of the art shall be solely with the city. And for the proposed agreement, Art in Uncommon Places shall ensure the project is completed in substantially the same form as approved by city council, which you'll see here in a moment. Ensure any substantive changes to the approved design or approved by city staff in a manner determined by the city manager. Be responsible for all cost liability and activities associated with the design, creation, and placement of the art until accepted by the city. Carry adequate insurance coverage for this purpose. And again, work with the city engineer and Director of Planning and Development Services to ensure the art is placed to agreed specifications. Comply with all city permitting and approval processes as required for all elements on private property. Upon completion of implementation of the art and acceptance by the city formally, in writing, transfer all ownership and responsibility to the city. And now for the, the more fun part. I introduce Julie Raymond and Dr. Gigi Perez-Langley to present the concept for Black Tie Cowboy. Afterwards, we're here to answer any of your questions.
Hi, good morning. I'm so glad to see everybody here today. We're excited about this. This has been a concept of items that I'm glad, glad to come see collectively in a group. Some of these have been produced in our studio for a long time. They were produced by the W-3 work camps prisoners, a lot of this work. A lot of work was created with community help. So, and we love that in public spaces because anytime you have your community participate, graffiti is lessened by a great deal, just besides everybody having ownership of what we've created. So we're excited about that. But let us show you what we're going to do. Okay, Black Tie Cowboy Downtown. Okay, we're going to start right over here, which is across the street from Twisted Root. We have two sculptures, they're going to go in this location. This is a girl walking the dog. This is sculptures that you see around town. These are going to be great wayfinders because they start at one end of this Chadburn project and end up another piece at the end of it. So that's a good way for you to follow through. This cement piece, which is about a 12-foot, 12-inch footprint, is made with cement and stained glass. It was sculpted by somebody near and dear to my heart that worked for us for about 30 years. So I'm really happy to see the placement of this piece because it's really quite gorgeous. And you can see them in their location. This piece really goes behind the fence, it's not in front of the fence. There's a great little landing there where it'd be protected, but the light reflectively will be awesome and show your path down that beautiful staircase to the river. And you can see the girl walking the dog, you have a view of Twisted Root right there. And I think everybody will want to walk their dog along here. Okay, as we move down the street on the right-hand side, well, up from Twisted Root, there's this ward that's in existence already, that's there. And so what we're suggesting is that we're going to have a photo op in front, which means downtown strong. You'll be able to stand there and get your photo taken. And we know that's promoted a lot of the spots that we already have internationally and nationally from having those Instagram opportunities. Okay, these are pianos that we've had in the studio. And we think this is going to be a great addition. In that hotel down there, there's a lot of open windows that just, with nothing in them. We can't go into those spaces, so we're going to wheel these pianos in there. And they'll be locked in that space. And then when downtown has the event, they can unlock them, put them on the street, and people can play them. There are a lot of piano projects in different cities, and they're quite successful and bring a lot of life to an area. Okay, you can see now how they would fit. The pianos look like they're on the street, but they really would be inside locked up until they were needed. Then you would move on right down the street, and you would see this beautiful mural that would be painted and produced for people to get their photo.
Ma'am? Okay, thank you.
And now we're going across the street. And this is a ward there too that's just white, a great spot to work. And these were helped, the locations were helped spotted with a subcommittee from the Art Commission. And so we walked the street with downtown, the planning commission, the city officials. And so we've had a lot of forethought on this. Okay, this is a beautiful finished shot of cowgirls, because we have a lot of cowgirls in this town besides just- in this town besides just cowboys. And these will be hand-painted, and we will also add some history. We tried to lead into everything that was historical of downtown to give everybody a real good idea. Okay, next, this is 307, which I think, anyway, these are the two, we are not going to work on that metal door. On the left and the right, there are wood panels, so we will take and we will produce in our studio on panel. These will be partly painted and partly mosaic. And the cowboy's going to have the silver spur from Holland, the little horny toad that's historical, all of y'all know these pieces, so that will be added in. It's also a salute to "The True Western Town," that's the title we have. And to the right is the girl, and that's to salute the music-friendly capital that we receive that award for. We want to hang on to those. Okay, these windows are going to be with black and white vinyl mesh. The windows in the hotel on that corner across from Angry Cactus, they're just empty, there's nothing. And so we're trying to make vertical presence. You made, you did a great job of putting a beautiful 2 million on the street, but we want a pretty backdrop. And these will cover them with people will be able to see out the window, but not able to look in. And they're easy removed and transferred if that building happened to sell. But we, the history of this is of the two Billies, and I'll let Gigi tell you that part.
Hi, good morning. So the first one.
Yeah, sorry.
Podiums aren't my friend. The first one is of Billy McBride. And Billy McBride started the Girls Rodeo Association here in a downtown San Angelo hotel. We're not sure which one, but this one seems like a nice one to represent her. And so she started the Girls Rodeo Association, which is now the Women's Professional Rodeo Association. So we want to highlight that history of cowgirls here. The other Bill is William B. Bill Ward, and he is the current picture of the Professional Rodeo Association. His image is what that was created of. And that was come from a picture that was taken here at San Angelo in our open-air arena. So we want to really highlight that history.
I thought that was both real cool. Okay. Then, as you can see, what that changes, that footprint, those, you know, this shows you the before and after. And I think that's going to make a beautiful impact. And I, and this vinyl mesh is incredible product. It doesn't put any pressure on the window, it, the longevity of it's great, the UV rate is high. Anyway, I just think it's perfect for this spot, and the owner of this building is excited for us to do this project. Okay, here's the fun things. These are probably some of the things you've seen, everything else is already produced. We worked real hard to get the continuity of this to all go under the Black Tie Cowboy, but you needed some really signature pieces. These are going to be produced out of architectural styrofoam. Anytime you see a new building right now, and it looks like it's historic, that's how it's produced, is with this architectural styrofoam. It's much denser, then they have fiberglass that's wrapped on that, and then it's sprayed with cement. They also have metal armatures in the inside. We are working with a master in both fields, a master that has done architectural styrofoam. Amazing, it's so fun to watch him. He created some tools to do this, I'd love for y'all to come see this at the studio. And then the welder that we've got that created the black tie, it's so artistically done, it's amazing. And he's done several sculptures in town, such as in front of the Fine Arts Museum and over by Jim Bean. But the height of these is 12-foot, 11-foot, and 10-foot, and 9-foot, and we are working with everybody to make sure the placement and materials are perfect for this location. And they will be placed on the corners of Chadburn and Tuig, and they are going to look across from each other in these spots. Their footprint is very small, there's only like one core drilling that will have to happen. We also have been working with people to make sure that all that meets regulations every which way. But I think they're quite striking, and I think they're going to make a big statement. Okay, and then we did, you have this black fence here, and you have the Elmer Keltner mural. So we wanted to add a little pop and some interest along this where the DG or the gravel is right there. And we're doing these beautiful cactus stools. They are 18 inches high and 18 inches in circumference. So they're just perfect to sit on, and they're quite durable, and they really blend in beautifully with the Elmer Keltner mural. Okay, and you've got to have a little fun. This is, used to be Texas Eyeglass Place, so what we did is we're going to create a mural of this dog that's wearing glasses. Somebody mentioned it'd be really cool if we had a little water bowl so they could actually get a drink there when they're walking their dog. But anyway, that owner wants it placed in that window, so that's, that's what we're going to do. Okay, this building, we tried to make sure that every owner was content with what we were doing. So we are going to use the set-ins in here, because it has like a porch that would cover things. And also, we will be painting, you'll see what we're going to paint. But we had a gentleman come to us about a year ago, maybe even two years ago, wrote a letter, that he'd love a place to play chess with his chess club that he has. So we're going to take these cement tables and chairs, and we're going to do a chess game on top. But we're going to visit with him about the regulations to make it tournament-worthy, and there's all these rules. So we've been visiting with experts on each one of these things that we're contributing. These beautiful little stools also, which were created by all women in town. And then we have this sculpture, and let's show you the placement of this. So right here, we're going to use that awning, it could be turned into piano keys or painted black and white, the tables will go right under there. And then this brick building right there, a little brick wall, we thought it needed a little something, so we have these stools and this sculpture that would be placed This piece is a beautiful black and white mosaic that's been housed in our studio. It was created by couples at a couple thing that we did. It's very intricate, and so we're going to place it in the window. And just taking and changing the bottom of this building is very impacting, even though this piece is not large. That's a game changer. Okay, and that awning is really shredded, but we went and looked at it, if we roll it out a little bit, the fabric is good. So we're going to roll it out and have it, it'll be all together. Okay, this is the kissing couple, and this is the end of the project, just as we began with the wire people. We created this with West Texas Guidance for Suicide Prevention. A lot of these sculptures have hearts that we put in there for "Shine the Light." And so I think these are great wayfinders and excited. If we get to do this, and y'all accept this, the day of the opening, we will have flowers in his hands for her. So anyway, I think we're quite excited about this project, and if we get approved, we can almost start tomorrow.
Julie, I could not be more excited about the work, the vision, the creativity behind this project. It just puts a smile on your face. There's, it will have a dynamic impact on people coming downtown, wanting to take photographs. It will be, quote, "the talk of the town," and maybe "the talk of Texas." I think it's great, the fact that you all have spent the time, the energy, and the investment in creating this is, for me, very exciting. And I can't imagine, I know there's a dollar amount that, quite honestly, I think it's something like a million dollars' worth of art and talent that you're donating to the city.
Yes.
And, but it's worth millions more, I know, in terms of the ultimate impact on the city, so thank you.
Oh, you're, thank you. It's our, our privilege and our honor to get to do that. I never dreamed what we ever get to do would have the impact that it has. The pop art and paintbrush alley, we're, the recognition that we're getting nationally now is just unbelievable. We have some things in the work. If this goes, that we will really be able to promote even more for this city. And I'm, anyway, thank you, it is our honor and...
My only question is this, when's it going to be done?
Well, like I said, most of this has already been produced. This has been a long-term thought. And to coordinate this whole effort where it would look like it was connected in continuity, you know, we've been working on that, and we're fortunate to have these pieces at our disposal that we are willing to donate. So we only have a few things to do, and we are already producing the tall sculptures. If you don't take them, there's another city, I don't, that wants them.
We want them.
So I, I, I had to do that so my board wouldn't be mad at me, to say, okay, we're going to produce something before it's done, okay? So, and so we have a mosaic to do, we have a couple murals, but we're going to, we're going to commission the best of the best for the murals.
Other questions? Yes, Tom, I mean, Harry.
Julie, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I know it's been, we talked about this three or four years ago, as we started the project downtown. And I appreciate the fact is you've checked all the boxes, you went to the Public Art Commission, you walked the street, you've looked at where all that stuff goes. So those questions that I may have had six months ago, you've already taken care of. So from my perspective, we're going to get this going as soon as we can. Thank you.
Yes, Lucy.
Julie, I want, I'm just like the mayor, I am so excited. I love pretty things. And you were just putting the icing on the cake downtown. It is going to, with our streets and with this art, it is going to look so nice. I am so grateful that you had this vision, and now we get to enjoy it. So thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, Karen?
Yes, I have a few questions and, but first a comment. So you are an exemplary, both of you are exemplary ambassadors for this city in, in what you do. And I hope that your efforts to beautify our community and be involved as civic activists inspires others, other artists to do the same. I think that would be fantastic.
That's what we hope.
And that this is just the beginning. I'm curious, and I see Bob Blueheart in the crowd, so I'm wondering if the historic photographs you're using can be attributed to M.C. Ragsdale, our own historic, rather famous historic photographer.
Yeah, we will, we will be checking those. We use these as references. So, but yes, and we have West Texas Collection that we work hand-in-hand with.
Right.
And they, if they have it, then we have access to it.
That's right.
And then I'm pretty sure somebody else we've consulted with has access. But thank you for giving me a heads-up on that.
I think that, I think the archive is split between Fort Concho National Historic Landmark and ASU, if I'm not mistaken. And what a great resource, and they're personal to us, personal to San Angelo.
Oh, no.
So it doesn't get any better than that, absolutely. So there's bound to be lots and lots of cowboys and cowgirls and other things to choose from. So I, when this appeared on the agenda, I got really curious. And this next part that I'm about to say doesn't really have anything to do with you. You did everything exactly as prescribed by the city insofar as we have guidelines in place. But I have a couple of questions for Council and for legal, and we can continue this later. But I could not find any evidence of San Angelo having a public art ordinance. As far as I can discern, that does not exist.
We have a public art commission.
We have the Public Art Commission. So that made me even more curious, because as the visual arts capital of Texas, I feel that we want to be ahead of everything, that we want to sort of be leading the charge on public art, as well as, as well as anything that would further our reputation and help us maintain that position. So I looked at some neighbor cities, some other Texas cities, I, just for the heck of it, I looked at Lubbock, I looked at Austin, I looked at Fort Worth, and I found that there's a very definite set of guidelines for public art. There's, there are ordinances in place, it protects the artist, it protects the government, it protects sort of everybody, it makes the pathway very clear, and I hope that that's something that we can perhaps put in place after the fact, because it might help us do better, be better.
Most of the time, when that's established, then the city is willing to give 1% of the art money for every new building built to the arts.
I noticed that. I noticed that, that there is a financial tie-in, and I also noticed that it's more typically, they will call, there'll be a call for artists. The city, the city is frequently driving that, rather than what you're doing, which is the inverse of it. But recently, we had a funny situation appear before Council, it involved a sheep that PETA wanted to place in, in public, and the issue became the lack of guidelines. We had a conversation about that. So at the very least, I hope that we can publish some sort of guidelines that, and it's been so recent that we don't have them yet, I understand that. And so forgive me for derailing the, all the joy about your beautiful art just for a minute, but it's timely, and it was, it was the right time to ask.
We actually do have public art guidelines that were looked at in accordance with this particular art, and the Public Art Commission is reviewing those now for changes that will come to Council for approval. So the Public Art Commission makes recommendations to Council for any art that is in the public right-of-way. The Historic Commission in the downtown area makes recommendations for any placement of art on structures such as the murals. They don't look at the content, but just at the placement and making sure that's all appropriate. So we do have some guidelines. It's not in the form of an ordinance, the ordinance just creates, the board, and the board develops the guidelines.
You led me to my last question, you talked about the fact that they don't govern content. If I, I was able to access not the minutes from the, the Art Committee, Public Art Commission's meeting, those were not available to me anywhere that I could find. But I did find the video of the Design and Historic Review Board, in which it is stated by a member of the audience, Sherry, talked about the Department of the Interior, I believe, has a short list, a lot of them are just practical and common sense, but they pretty much say that you, that it's a what you see is what you get sort of deal, that once we approve it, it's, it's what we're getting. Sherry can clarify that if I've misunderstood that, but I see her nodding. And yet you have, you have stated that you're going to go back into the archive and you're going to perhaps choose some different photographs. So I don't know how or if that affects what we're doing here today, maybe, maybe it doesn't at all.
That's, that's, that's not hard to do. That would probably go through the Historical Commission, which we've already been through, and they were quite content with what you did, because in that statement, I said we would not do anything that was not looked at and done by that. So that's already really been done. And then also, I was on the beginning of the Art Commission, if that's what you, and that was why it was created, it's just what you were questioning. And that has been in place for how long, Carl? 2006.
If not seven, I'm not sure if it was six or seven, but it was done.
Anyway, so that was why that was, just to answer the questions that you were concerned about, that that would be a clearinghouse. And so that, we have placed that in place.
Karen, if we need to, if the, I think the pictures, I think, are meant to represent the intent of what is going to be put there. If that changes drastically from what is existing, then we could also bring those back to you. For, once it goes through the process, we could, but if then, if the picture is basically the same picture, just a, you know, from a Ragsdale versus a something else, but same picture, then we could move forward. If it changes drastically, then we could bring those back.
It goes back through that process.
We could bring it through that process again.
I know I'm being perceived as the wet blanket, but I'm just seeking to understand how the process works. Because it was interesting to me as I tried to navigate, I did find online forums for temporary public art, but not for permanent public art. And so it just got more and more of a head-scratcher for me. Thanks for listening.
And in terms of guidelines, the Public Art Commission has called meetings, so we haven't, they haven't reviewed the minutes from the last meeting, but we're working to schedule the next meeting in March, and guidelines was asked to be discussed at this coming meeting, so it's already going to be on the agenda. So your, your direction input will help with that discussion.
Are we allowed to attend those meetings?
Access?
Are we allowed to attend those meetings?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, they're public meetings.
We appoint people, so yes.
Well, I think part of the confusion when it comes to art is that this art is being given to the city, so it's the city's art, and it's the city's voice, and y'all get a lot of say on what it looks like and where it's placed, versus a private individual's voice in art, which we'd have very little say on what that says. So it, it's convoluted, because it's a very convoluted issue.
Other questions or comments, Tony?
Yes, ma'am.
Couple of questions, to piggyback on something Karen brought up. Is it going to be permanent, or will, will y'all change things from time to time?
No, what we put in place will be there until the, the building sells, or, you know, something else abstract, because everything we produce, what we try to do is get the longevity of it. We try to make it the biggest product that we can. I'm forever researching what's the best materials to use outside. This styrofoam thing's a, a game changer, with some other things that we're using.
Okay, good, good, thank you. And I have completely forgotten... And I have completely forgotten my second question, so age has overcome me.
Other questions, comments?
Yes, ma'am. What I really like about this is the participation of art in art. When I saw that strong man image, I thought about the hundreds of thousands of people who have held up the Tower of Pisa.
Oh, wow.
It's the same, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I mean, you stand in front of that and do the strong man thing, a couple in front of that sculptor that are smooching, or whatever, I think it really lends a different aspect to the art, and I really love that. Are you, those pictures that you have from the twenties of the young ladies with the hats on, is that going to be in the same general color?
Yes, yes.
Sepia kind of?
Yes, we, we tried to stay with what was going with what was pre-designed by the designer of the street, and the light posts are black, the signage is black, and it just makes a beautiful backdrop for the art.
And some of these are on unused buildings, they're vacant for the time being.
Most, yes.
Now, when someone takes it over and they have the opportunity to return the art?
They do. You, at that point, will own the art, so you can move it, you know, where you, where you would like to, or, and our, our experience is most of the time, it markets their building and they're quite happy just to keep it.
Well, we have several more blocks going north, that there are windows, that they could be moved from point A to point B should that happen, but legitimately, the buildings that you have selected are buildings that need enhanced, in many cases, and if these enhancements makes you appreciate the art, and maybe you stop looking at the deterioration in the building perhaps, so it refocuses the eye. And again, I think this tells a strong tale about the city of San Angelo, the visual arts capital. We initiated these conversations about the streetscape and art on the streetscape. We said we wanted things that people wanted to be sitting on and having their photograph taken, things that people wanted to be photographed next to them on, but very, as you say, the strong arm pictures that people send everywhere. And we think it will, in fact, bring a lot of attention, more attention to the city of San Angelo, and it's just so well thought out, it's so well done, you guys have done your research, you've worked hard on it. This is an unbelievable, great gift to the city of San Angelo and downtown. Thank you.
One more item.
Yes.
Me too.
We always tend to forget a favorite son of this town who is well-known to our generation. I guess I'm going to conduct a one-man campaign to do something for Fest Parker.
Oh, well, I'll let you pay for the wine for the opening.
We also have many more blocks. This project isn't over, it's just beginning because there's, I don't know, four or five more blocks that will ultimately require some public art enhancement, and we'll let this be the test for how public art enhances the community, and so...
I will, I will keep that in mind.
Please.
One little final piece of housekeeping. Has the use of all items been approved by original artists and any form of release obtained for COSA leaving?
Original artists.
I'm thinking particularly about the, the, I forget how you referred to them, it was a man and a woman.
It's a mosaic in paint, that's, we are doing that, so we are, we are creating that.
You are the artist.
We are the artist.
It just looks so much like Dolan Gaiman from Denver's work. I mean, I, it just looks exactly like his work, so I just...
Well, it, that, you know, we will, it's going to take and be ours.
Okay.
You know, I have to, anyway, a concept has to be presented, but we will make that San Angelo.
Okay, great, just trying to keep us clean.
These are conceptual, these aren't the final product, right?
Yeah, correct.
Other questions, comments?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented. May I have a second?
Second, ma'am.
Several seconds on there. So with that, we'll open this up for public comment, and I see Steve is already standing, so he can come forward.
Thank you. Steve, Steve Hampton, is the mic on loud, am I speaking, can I be heard? Okay. I, Steve Hampton, District Six. I came forward just to say that I, I, I'm amazed that San Angelo likes art so much. We have a park already, and now we want to do more, and I, I'm commending it, is what I'm doing. I, I'm grateful for that, and I got to thinking about how this is a cowboy town, and we don't really do anything for the blacksmith and that kind of art, and, and I would like to see more of that kind of thing, but...
I'll repeat, we have many more blocks.
Right, many more blocks. Also, Councilman Smith brought up a legal point, and I think that's, I think that was excellent, I really liked that, that we, she had her eye on, on the ball, and I appreciate that, those comments about keeping San Angelo out of trouble, and she mentioned the sheep, and, you know, when I got here, I was told those were called welcome use.
Oh.
Welcome use, and I always thought that was...
Welcome you.
I always thought that was, you know, what, what it was about, so, and I wanted to bring up Larry, good comments too, thank you.
There's further public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of passing the resolution as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Sounds like it's seven zero. Get to work, get it out there.
Thank you. And we'll send you an invite for the opening.
Perfect. Item C, consider authorizing the city manager to reject all bids received for RFB FC-01-24 HVAC unit replacements at Chase State Office Building. You are on, Bob.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor and Council. This is a bit of a rerun from the last meeting. I regret I was not here to address it. I was driving a 15-ton truck from Arizona with donated furniture and books for the fort, but then again, two of you weren't here either, so we can all enjoy this again. This project was phase two of a five-year plan to replace eventually all of the air conditioning units on the roof at the State Building and the Workforce Building. We successfully completed phase one earlier. Staff put together a proposal, it was bid out, bids received. In retrospect, we did not bid out a very clean project. A memo in your packet outlines some of the major issues. Certainly, the completion time was a major mistake on our part, we missed a few specifics, and we also threw a very bad quirk in the email system, managed to send out "you got the job" to all five bidders, which wasn't true. It is the staff's recommendation to take a step back, reject the bids, and start over quickly. We think we can get this back on the street fairly quickly. I deeply regret all of the errors. It's my fund, the building I'm in charge of, and I missed several key factors. I regret that. I know also we have made several people unhappy. I understand, I get it, I understand it, but I think ultimately, what I am trying to do as the steward of the building and as your agent for the building, is to get the best possible project and deal that the building deserves, and the only way to do that is to start over, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I'm going to open up the floor for questions. Larry, do you have a question for Bob?
I just want a problem that I see with it is all the cards are on the table among those contractors who bid this.
Correct.
They know the low point, the lowest bid that was offered, so that kind of is a cat out of the bag for, for several of them that bid lower, that all of a sudden, these, some other people could try to outbid them.
The bid process is structured in such a way that in theory, none of the vendors should be talking to one another, and the project is going to be rebid with better specifications, but overall, it will still be 10 units. And I have seen in times past, when a project has been rebid, that we still receive quality bids. Does that answer the question? No, I'm sorry.
Karen, questions for Bob? Lucy?
No.
Harry?
No, I don't have any, thank you.
Tom?
All right.
Tommy? All right, with that, I would ask that there be a motion made to reject all bids received previously. May I have that motion?
Some move...
Some move by Harry.
Second.
Second by Lucy. With that, we'll open up the floor for public comment.
Mike Stewart, University Heating and Cooling, I was the low bid winner, or not the winner, I was the low bid. Due to the paper that Bob sent out, said there were some confusing communications. There was no confusing communications with all those contractors. We were all on the roof, we all asked the questions, we got clarification from two different people. One of them was that, I actually brought to them retention that they need hail guards. Now, the last phase, whoever put these units on a roof, there's no hail guards at all. That tells me they didn't get permits or inspections. I'm not sure if you guys have engineers that follow up with this procedure, but I guess they thought we don't get hail storms here in San Angelo. Another one that I had, I met every bid, every expectation that they asked for on this bid. This was a great bid. The packet from the purchase department was awesome, because on this bid, they put pictures of every single unit that we're replacing, that I sent to my engineer in San Antonio and bid the exact thing that they're asking for. But I did add the hail guards up there to all the contractors, and I told all the contractors on the roof, you need to get with our inspector Gary Whitaker if you have any questions because our, our city codes are different from your codes in Dallas and Houston. Also, I would like to present this paper that Bob and everybody else had missed on my bid by our city code. Can I give this to somebody?
Give it to Teresa.
Okay. You have to have, you have to have fresh air dampers. Anybody know what fresh air dampers are?
I don't.
Got to have those on a commercial building when you have occupied people in a building. That's part of our code as well. So I would like, you know, I covered every aspect that every contractor should know by their codes if they're doing business here in San Angelo. You should know our laws and our codes. I've been doing this 25 years, I worked out at the base, it's not my first rodeo, I know what I'm doing, and I was up on that roof to help everybody as well as myself. So, I believe I, I was the low bid, I should be doing the job right now, should be on the roof on this beautiful day, working, but we're going to prolong this. This is going to go probably another 30 to 90 days, easy, and I put in my bid that I can do this in six months. And the reason why I did six months was because I have one unit that the factory can't get out for probably about two or three months. So that's where I was at. So I'm kind of upset that this all happened the way it did. Yeah, it was the email situation sending out, wasn't my fault, why should I be penalized? So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'd like clarification on, was this email system, I want verified that the email was sent to all five people, so five people received an email that said they got the job?
Five people simultaneously received an email which should have gone only to the apparent low bidder, that is correct. I don't know how that happened. We worked with IT to make sure whatever program was there would, make sure it does not happen again.
So the other four bidders, what happened to them?
We subsequently sent out another email correcting it.
Also to clarify, and legal may want to chime in, but these are the initial contacts, those bids are not officially awarded until we come to this board. So, we initially tried to notify people, telling them where we are in the process, how we've come along, and so forth, so...
I agree, that's, they, nobody in staff has the ability to award those bids, it was just saying that this was going to be coming to council is what it should have said. It was very convoluted, as Daniel noticed when he read a version of it, which is, just points to the fact that it needs to be redone. We, no matter who we award it to, it's going to be open to challenge if we don't fix some of those things, not to mention, as Bob said, there were things that we left out of the specs that we want to add back in. So, to kind of address the cost problem, it's going to be substantially the same, but there are going to be some differences that could affect pricing that gives a little bit of, you know, everybody doesn't know exactly what people are going to bid.
So, the fresh air dampers are now added to a part of this bid as well as the hail guards?
That is correct, and we're going to do a very pinpoint review with city staff of this bid to make sure every single detail is included.
And why were those missed initially?
Because we goofed. I goofed. I didn't ask the right people.
Okay. Yes, Larry?
So, what you're saying is if Mr. Stewart hadn't told you about them, probably would have been no hail guards or that other equipment, is that correct?
That's one way of looking at it, although I think the city inspectors would have got to it eventually.
But then what would have happened?
Then depending on the legal issues, it would have been a change order perhaps, or we would have just had to separately put them on with another vendor or contract.
Questions, other questions, other comments from, from council? So, I, just as a, to be sure, comment, are we sure, moving forward, that we, of course, today is just rejecting, but of course, the next question is, are we sure, we put this back out again, that we have dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's to ensure this doesn't come back up here again with additional specifications or changes relative to what we expect in the bids?
I think we share that goal.
All right, further public comment? Seeing none, we will now take a vote. All those in favor of rejecting this initial, yes, I didn't, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. So, we will now take a vote. All those in favor of rejecting the bids, please say aye.
Aye.
So, the bid is rejected by a six-zero vote. We will move on to item D, first reading and public hearing of ordinances for the following cases for property being 11 acres located at the northwest corner of Gregory Drive in Smith Boulevard, and Rick, would you like to make an announcement?
If I can get my mic turned on, there it goes. Just to let everyone know and to, not really welcome, because he's, he's been here a good while, but Aaron of Vanoy will be taking the role as our new planning director for the city of San Angelo, and so we want to welcome him officially into that capacity. He's kind of been serving in that role, as you've seen him up here a lot over the last few months. He's done an outstanding job in keeping all those balls in the air and flowing, and so we haven't added any additional staff yet, so we still have the same number, but I wanted to officially announce that to the community and welcome him, so.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, I'm very honored and humbled to serve in that capacity and step into that role. It's going to be challenging for me, a new challenge which I always enjoy, and we do have a great core of staff, and we hope to continue to do our...
And we do have a great core of staff, and we hope to continue to do our best for the citizens of San Angelo.
Thank you. You're on. Multiple levels, you're on.
All right. Did we get through that first caption?
I think I read none of it. To be clear. Okay, item D. First reading and public hearing of ordinances for the following cases for property being 11 acres located at the northwest corner of Gregory Drive and Smith Boulevard. One, CP 23-06, a request for an amendment to the comprehensive plan changing the future land use from commercial to neighborhood. And two, Z 23-18, a request to rezone from the office commercial zoning district to single-family residential zoning district.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Again, Aaron Vinoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is a comprehensive plan and rezoning for this 11 acres here at Smith Boulevard. You can see here on the image where Smith Boulevard does go back into the Paul Anne neighborhood and the corner of Gregory there, just off the Houston Hart freeway. So we are looking to rezone this from office commercial to single-family residential. And I believe the comprehensive plan was commercial, and we are changing that back to neighborhood. This is District Four, Ms. Lucy Gonzalez, in the Paul Anne neighborhood. So here you can see the zoning of the area. You can see that just to the north of this property is RS 3, and so that allows zero lot line, twin homes, those type of residential structures. I know that this developer's been working with that developer to the north, which is a great idea, because it is very flat. But as you get closer to the freeway, there's some drainage items that they will solve at the subdivision part. Here, we're just trying to create some more zoning for some more residential properties. So we did send out 13 notices. We did not receive any in support or in opposition. Paul Anne is a primarily residential neighborhood with Howard College on kind of the northeast that anchors it. Across the road is our industrial park. And then as you go back to the west to Bell Street, there's a little bit more retail, commercial. Along Houston Hart is commercial. And I might go back one, just one slide, you can see some commercial areas there. We're gonna potentially continue to keep that commercial buffer there, right off of Houston Hart. The biggest challenge is just transportation. And over time, as we make decisions at the council level about that entire neighborhood, we'll have to think about those transportation things of how do we get people to go down Rick's Drive, back to Bell Street, or do you come back around to connect back to Houston Hart? This residential and comprehensive plan from commercial to neighborhood and from office commercial to single-family residential did go before Planning Commission in January. They voted 6-0 in favor. And it is the staff's recommend, recommendation to approve both the comprehensive plan change and the zone change. With that, I'll take any questions.
Lucy, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. How many houses are y'all planning, or do you know that there might be planning on building there?
We haven't really had those discussions yet. They're still working on their preliminary plant and final plant. As those come forward, we'll have more of an idea of the lot layout. I do know that the developer is here in the audience today, and he may have a better idea of exactly how many houses he's looking at.
Well, the way we all know is that the city's always looking for homes being built, and I think this is a great idea. I live over there. That's my neighborhood. So I am not opposed to them going on and building that vacant lot that I've seen for 30 years. But yes, I'm very much in favor of this, so my, or my.
You would like to make a motion?
There you go. Thank you. I'm so glad you can read. No, you can read my mind. I would like to make a motion to approve as presented.
There's a motion and a second. I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. We'll move to item E. First reading and public hearing of ordinances for the following cases. One, CP 23-05, a request for an amendment to the comprehensive plan changing from commercial to neighborhood center being 3.72 acres located at 1621 and 1705 North Chadburn Street. And 2221, 18, 17, and 15 West 17th Street. And 2218, 16, 10, and 6 West 16th Street. And two, Z 23-19, a request to rezone from the general commercial, heavy commercial zoning district to the low-rise multifamily residential zoning district being .482 acres located at 1621 North Chadburn Street. Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Aaron Vinoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. Again, apologize for the lengthy captions that we have, but we just wanna encompass all of our property that we are looking to do the comprehensive plan and the rezoning. So this came to us from a person that has purchased the property at 1621 North Chadburn Street. They wanted to do some remodel and renovations on a historically overlaid property that many, many years ago had been converted to some apartments. We do find that it was historically overlaid back in the 80s, and so those apartments probably were changed back in the 70s. We just don't exactly know when those apartments took place. But for him to move forward, we wanted to get the proper zoning so that he could offer apartment living there, again, on one of our major corridors, that it fits in appropriately with the zoning around. So the comprehensive plan takes in a little bit more land area, and I'll show you on a slide in just a moment. And then the rezoning takes place only there at that 1621 that you see highlighted in red right now. That property is about, is .482 acres. It is in District Four, Lucy Gonzalez, and the neighborhood is Reagan. And we are changing from general, commercial, heavy commercial to an RM1 to allow a low-rise multifamily, and to change from the comprehensive plan of commercial to neighborhood center. So these two slide, or this slide with these two images will make a little more sense. You see Chadburn bisects that bright red area, and you see kind of the pink to the north and south on the left image, talking about the neighborhood and the future land. On the left side, that north, or the southern block of 17th, the north and south block of that, those are properties, as well as the southern, or the northern block of 16th Street. Those areas right there are what we're doing with the comprehensive plan. That is changing that to match those areas that are to the north and to the south, to that neighborhood center. We did not see that that was appropriate for that to be heavy commercial, especially since our residential in that area kind of encroaches quite a bit. We did talk with the neighborhoods quite a bit to talk about those things, and they wanted to stay kind of a neighborhood feel, even that close to Chadburn. So if you look to the right now, you can see the CGCH. That kinda just doesn't encompass that full breadth there, but just a little bit there. We did find it appropriate to change that for this residential structure so that it can go back to a low-rise residential structure. So with that, we did send out 43 notices. We had five in support, and you can see that they're kinda sprinkled around. The one in opposition, they actually have lived across from that house for many, many decades. They've actually seen that house as they grew up. And they gave us a little bit of the history of the house that they're, that we're actually still researching, that there potentially was a former mayor that lived in that house. We're still researching that to get some more information, which I think is another reason why it was historically overlaid. But so far, most of the neighborhood is in support of changing the comprehensive plan and the rezoning. So here's what the staff does recommend, as well as the Planning Commission, to change that for the comprehensive plan from the commercial down to a neighborhood commercial, which will still allow some light commercial, but it does also allow the residential for all of those addresses there along 17th and 16th, as well as the one on North Chadburn. And then the approval of the RM1 low-rise multifamily at the 1621 North Chadburn. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Again, Lucy, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron, the one person that opposed, what was their problem? What were they challenging?
They really didn't want significant changes to the property. They didn't want a new property owner to come in and change it significantly. Fortunately, the property is historically overlaid, and so the exterior of the property, that's under the design and historic commission's authority of how that's going to look. And we have expressed that to the new property owner, and so they understand that process. So that was their main concern. So we think their main concern has been solved, but they still showed up as an opposition.
Well, like our paperwork said, this is going to bring new life to that property. It's gonna enhance that side of town. And again, not only homes, but our community is in need of apartments.
Yes.
So for that, I make a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you. Second by Harry. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. We'll move to item F. First reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z 23-20, a request to rezone from the light manufacturing zoning district to the general commercial zoning district being 7.39 acres located at 926 Humble Road.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Aaron Vinoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. We're at 926 Humble Road. That's at the north part of our town, off of Highway 87. And you see Humble Road dissects there and goes back to, I believe, Lake Drive or maybe Chadburn Street. This is a property where most of the area to the north of here starts becoming light manufacturing. This also was light manufacturing, but a financial institution came and said, "Hey, we would really like to look at that property." And we said, "Well, let's rezone it down to general commercial. That's gonna allow you to come in and do and serve your customers the way you want to." This also gives us an opportunity where this property can be now general commercial. It allows us to kinda have a lower intensity at the entry of one of our major entrances of our town. This is in District Two, Mr. Tom Thompson, in the Riverside neighborhood. The total property is about 7.39 acres, and we are asking for a rezoning from the light manufacturing to the general commercial. So you can see here, off to the east, there is the ranch and estates that are very, very large properties. You can see they're very, some of them are maybe, from this image, look skinny and long. But remember, that subject property is seven acres, and so those are actually pretty good-sized properties. To the south is some properties that we just rezoned in the previous months to the general commercial, as well as to, I believe we did a little bit of heavy commercial in there for some equipment sales. And so this area of our town is growing as we grow out on 87 going north. And so we, our vision plan is commercial in this area, and so to move things from light manufacturing to commercial along this major corridor makes a lot of sense. The staff's recommendation is to approve this, to move from the general commercial to light manufacturing. It was presented to Planning Commission. They voted 6-0 in favor. And with that, I will answer any questions.
Tom?
No both parties involved. The house just to the east is the one that's actually selling the property. They want this to go through. There's no objections. I move to approve as presented.
Is there a second, a second by Karen? Public comment? You know, the only question I have is the following, and that is really a statement more than anything. So as we talk about the I-27 corridor and the impact, and I look at Bryant Boulevard, which is obviously gonna be I-27 ultimately down the road, have we, do we have enough width, left and right, to accommodate expansion for future interstate?
We do talk with Tech dot on that a lot, especially since 87 is a Tech dot. They believe they do it at this time. Anytime we have a property like this that fronts, we might send them just a memo during the rezoning process. But especially this property being an abstract, they will have to go through a subdivision. And so then we get their full comments of what needs to be done, and if any more land needs to be dedicated. So we will be going through that process as the next step.
Okay, thank you. Did I ask for public comment? Okay, so then I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. We will move into item G. First reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z 23-21, a request to expand the open structure overlay map to include the following area of Angelo Heights neighborhood. The 1,000, 3,000, and 4,000 blocks of Catalina Drive, 2,000 and 3,000 blocks of Nuatius Drive, Nuatius Drive, 1,000 block of Louise Drive, 1,000 block of Cordell Drive, 2,700 block of Eunice Drive, and the 2,700 block of Erling Drive. Again, you're on, Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Aaron Vinoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. This came to us through a process that we had a couple of projects go before our zoning board of adjustment. They had some carports that did not conform. We did determine that they were not in the open structure overlay, and it didn't allow them to have those structures. Therefore, the zoning board of adjustment asked this to go to the Planning Commission, at least for a discussion, to see if the Planning Commission was in favor of moving this open structure overlay to the north, to this specific neighborhood. And that's what's brought for you today. And so as I kinda zoom in, I have this screen right here, that pink right now, that is our open structure overlay map that we have for our community. As you can see, it sees quite a bit of our older neighborhoods, but not all of our neighborhoods, obviously. There are some neighborhoods that don't have this in. So as we go to the next screen, it kinda dials in to where we're at with Glenna Edmund and really the 29th kinda corridor right through there. OC Fisher just to the north and Kirby Community Park in that area. So you see, this neighborhood was just kind of excluded at the time. The open structure overlay map was created in 2003, I believe, and it just didn't include this area. This area started developing in the early 60s, particularly Catalina Drive, that went in and had some riverfront area, and also had some areas that were protected by government lands. And so those houses developed first, and then the, kinda the infill happened after that. So we've seen houses in there, all the way from the early 60s all the way to the early 2000s. Right now, those red pins represent some open structures that would meet our open structure map. But you see, several of them are outside of the map that were created without the proper steps to go through to create those. So we did send out a lot of notices. This is a lot of neighborhood to send out. 231 notices were mailed out. We found 21 in support that were sent back. One in opposition, right up here by the river. Their opposition was they were in fear that the open structure map extension and allowing these carports may have some impact on their property values. We haven't necessarily seen that through our other open structures, as most of those property values, over time, have increased for various reasons. And it does take individual owner responsibility of how they maintain that. At this point, I'll just remind you, we are doing just the map extension into this area. The zoning text that allows the, what the structure looks like is staying intact. It would still apply to these structures, so we may still have to do a few more things to help these folks come into compliance. But we're not asking to change the text of the ordinance at this time. So with that, staff has the recommendation of approval of extension of the open structure overlay map into this Angelo Heights neighborhood. The Planning Commission did see this in January, and they did vote 6 to 0 in favor. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Whose district is this in?
This is.
Okay, then you're on.
One more time, Rick gave me a heads up on this well over a month ago. I've talked to two or three people. This is a great first step, Aaron, in cleaning a lot of these things up and moving forward. I think this, what we do here will probably move to other parts of San Angelo, but it's, it's the good first step, the best first step to kinda get all this cleaned. So I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Second by Tommy. Public comment? Walk slowly.
How are y'all this morning?
We're good.
I live at 1719 Catalina. I'm in favor for the overlay. I'm not clear, I went to the planning meeting when this happened, or when it came about, and they were saying about not grandfathering any of the structures. And I've lived there for 48 years, bought the house brand new. A lot of those awnings were there before I got there. And the overlay, or the ordinance in the way it reads of what you have to do to meet compliance of the new way to build a structure attached to the house, is going to be. They didn't show a picture of what these awnings looked like, but the awnings that were. were built back in those days were of aluminum structure with corrugated steel, and you could build those and were accepted at the time for relatively cheap, not cheap, but, you know, what they're saying to do with the overlay now for people going forward, and if you can't keep the structure that you've got and try to make it match what your ordinance says you have to do, you're talking about anywhere from ten to twenty-five thousand to build one of these things. Whereas a structure that's already there might have cost two to three thousand. And I'm just wanting a clarification, or if there is a clarification on grandfathering or how they're gonna approach that, if you do meet the criteria of what the overlay says that you have to meet and that you're an open structure, I don't know if he can answer any questions on that or not, or...
I think they're appropriate questions, and I think we certainly need some answers on those, good points. So Erin, if you'd like to come forward and answer those, because what does grandfather mean? Obviously, if it's already built, we're not gonna make them rebuild it to meet different qualifications now.
Right. And we're also basically trying to determine the age of that structure. Was it built before the open structure overlay even came into effect? Then that's probably what the traditional term of grandfathered really means, if that structure's there, it's been there, we're not gonna make any modifications to it. The ones that came forward, they were structures that have been built in the last couple of years, and we're gonna have to work with them, maybe through an administrative process, maybe through our zoning board of adjustment, if there's some things that need to be corrected. One of them, that came all the way to the property line, it's supposed to be three feet back, but we can work through that to help that property owner specifically understand. The biggest challenge that most of them have is they didn't go through the building permit process. They didn't actually use a contractor that chose to get a permit from the city to legalize those structures. So we just want to make sure that we help them clean it up correctly. Again, we are gonna be looking at that age of that structure. We're gonna probably work with our zoning board of adjustment, as well as city staff of, all right, what does our ordinance say? We do talk about some slope and some roofing material, but maybe there's some color changes that could happen that could meet the intent, and so we're not having to rebuild structures or take structures down. There may be some minor modifications on some, but we don't anticipate that on all twelve that we've been, that we've identified.
Will the administrative time and effort on doing what you just said is going to be cumbersome, is it not?
Well, we've identified around twelve right now. There may be twelve to fourteen that are out there, so we don't have a significant number of structures that are built that appear to be in some kind of out-of-compliance element. So we don't believe that's gonna be significant. We are gonna send letters to them, ask them to come in and sit down and visit with us so that we can work with them one-on-one on what their specific needs are for their property and see if we can resolve some of those issues.
But just to clarify, at the end of the day, they still have to meet the intent of what the policy says. And so no matter when it was built, you know, if it was built without a permit and it didn't meet the intent, so, you know, the way it's written is you have to kind of retain the character of the house. So if you just added on a flat carport that's tacked on there, that doesn't meet the intent of what the ordinance allows you to do. And so while it does start allowing these people the right to have one, which they didn't have before, it gives them that right, but they still have to meet the criteria that the ordinance says. If it does not, then the only way they can keep that is to get a variance through the process to make it all legal. This just gives them the right to go ahead and do that.
When was the ordinance created?
I believe the open structure ordinance was created in two thousand and three, if I'm, it's either two thousand and three, two thousand and six, but I think it was two thousand and three.
So the majority of these houses were built when?
I would say the majority of them were built, probably the, I think I had a mean average of what date, but I would say it was in the...
Sixties and seventies.
Yeah, sixties and seventies.
I think the reason this area may have been left out before is there is a strip of a little bit newer houses in there as well, and so at that time, they're like, you know, we don't want carports, you know, tacked on, build a garage. And so there was still some newer housing, not today new, but at the time newer. So that's why it was probably left out in the first place.
So those homes that were built and carports added on prior to two thousand and three or two thousand and six, whichever year we decided is the date, there's no challenge or issue to those homes and those structures?
There could be. If they're built illegally, if they're not built with a permit and it's tacked on, it still would, you know, just because the overlay came in, not in this area, it came in these other areas. So this area's never had it. So this is new to this area. It's just trying to incorporate this small piece that just makes sense to be tacked on to the rest of that area where we will consider them.
So grandfather means what?
In this case, there is no grandfathering that could happen.
That's correct. Yeah, I think that we don't want to leave the impression that this is gonna be an easy fix for all of these homeowners. I think that there are options for them, but for example, the board of adjustment is very limited in the scope of how they can, what they're supposed to be granting. It shouldn't just be, I feel bad for this guy because he did something he wasn't supposed to do. There needs to be something significant that they're altering, and he can't possibly meet the requirements. So I think what Rick was saying was right on, that a lot of these buildings, they're gonna still have to make some changes, a lot of them will.
The real thing it does is that it, all the cases don't have to now go to the process. It allows this to happen as long as they meet these criteria. Before, it just didn't allow it to happen, so you had to, you had to go regardless for a variance. In this case now, if they can meet the intent of the ordinance, they don't have to process through to the Planning Commission or the ZBA.
Zoning Board of Adjustment, yes. So there may be some variances needed on some of these structures.
Okay. So other questions or comments from council? Okay, so we already had the motion in the second. We've had one public comment. Are there further public comments at this point? Steve?
Steve Hampton, District Six. I think this is governmental overstep. I think this is trying to saddle a bronc without any training. I mean, there's just no, there's no requirement here, there's no problems, apparently, and, you know, you're trying to force them to do things that they don't, they don't really need to do. I don't appreciate, you know, that, I can understand a rule from now on, but everybody ought to be able to grandfather just as it is. And unless there is a individual between two neighbors problem, and then you side with the current regulation. Otherwise, you know, you, I don't appreciate this at all. This is my kind of, this is, this is bad government to me. These people, you know, they might have done something wrong, and if it falls down, they can't rebuild it, maybe. But otherwise, it ought to be left alone. Thank you.
So to be clear, let's talk through this one more time. So to be clear, we are saying the following, that we are expanding the boundaries of this over, this open structure overlay. There is a current open structure overlay map already.
Correct, yes.
And that map was created somewhere between two thousand and three or six, which you guys will verify that year, because that's pretty key to...
Yes.
This issue.
And so any area outside of that established map wouldn't allow an open structure at all. So the other thing would be...
So some people went ahead and put an open structure up, so...
Correct. So the next step would be if we didn't extend it, then the city has to choose, do we go and enforce them and tell them to remove it?
And instead, what we're asking to do is to extend the overlay and then work with these twelve people...
Yes, ma'am.
...to make sure they're in compliance with the ordinance...
Correct.
Or the building codes.
Correct.
Correct. Any further explanation or clarification?
No, but Brenda, in research, this is the best first step to give each one of these people individual representation to come back. All right? We can't blanket it from, you know, the back forward. We gotta do it from the front out and go in, but I strongly agree that there's a bunch of these, and if you drive through it, several of them look like there won't be a problem. There's a couple of them that, there are gonna be some things that are gonna have to be addressed, but they have a process to come back and appeal for a variance that we will all get to make that decision.
Just to make clear what we're talking about, just get rid of the gray matter.
Could I add a comment?
Please come forward.
Ask about, I found a article, I found a article in the Standard Times.
State your name again.
I'm sorry. Car word at seventeen nineteen Catalina Drive. I found an article where ninety-five, they grandfathered all the houses through the ninety-five storm and on. The article stated that they were grandfathered townwide and that they reduced the process on repairing homes and roofing and stuff like that. And what I want to reiterate is these awnings were built as what people were doing all over town. I mean, we, they haven't done anything exceptional in that area. Now you're asking to go to another criteria that it's gotta be attached to the house, it's gotta have the roof line the same as the house or in generality. So what they're saying is a flat roof or a slightly sloped roof can't be used, it's gotta be attached to the house, which at the time, awnings weren't supposed to be attached to the house. They could be standing separate. And now you're wanting them tied to the house, and it's gotta be with the roofing of what's on the house. Lot of houses, you're not gonna be able to match that. I guess that's a step, but to build a structure like that is gonna cost a person twenty, I'm gonna say ten to twenty thousand. And whereas the awnings, like the guy that was speaking for us said that there's nothing wrong with these structures. I mean, they may need to be looked at that they are secure and that they are strong. And that's what was said in ninety-five, that people could keep their awnings as long as they met a super, met a structural value that would last, and there was no issue of them falling down or, you know, like they were already starting to be diminished. But there's a lot of metal roofs out there. All the ones that are out there are pretty secure. And to make those people try to get to the area of matching it to the house is going to be quite expensive. I mean, but that's, I mean, that's y'all's choice to put that on us or the people that's got awnings, and then we'll have to deal with that. But I think really that it ought to be grandfathered, and that's what I came up here to say. I appreciate it.
Would there be an article in a newspaper in ninety-five that would have given direction?
I can...
Whatever happened in nineteen ninety-five and two thousand and five, which is the date that Heather and I found, council instituted these rules regulating carports and what they're supposed to look like. The staff really doesn't have any ability to deviate from what council has directed. So if you want to not care about what carports look like, then we would need to come and remove these provisions from the code of ordinances.
So the carport...
So what they're getting today is actually a win, as has been explained. They have put these up illegally. Before you guys approved this, if it gets approved, our action would have been to force them to take it down. Now they're gonna be allowed to keep it as long as they meet the requirements that have been in place since two thousand and five for carports.
So the two thousand and five is when the carport ordinance went in, was approved?
That's what it appears, yes.
But these, these carports, the way they're built, you're, and if they're on a slope and you've got a straight-line house that's got a pitch, the structure isn't gonna allow you to pitch it to the house unless you tear down the whole structure and rebuild. Because if you've got a slope like this and you need to tie that roof with a pitch to a house, then you're gonna have to raise the whole structure up, which I guess can be done, it's, it's just gonna cost...
Thank you.
...a lot. I just wanted to state that, and maybe y'all will see way through it. Thank you.
Yes, Larry. Larry, go ahead.
So if, if these people have flat-roofed awnings or carports, and they're gonna have to go to a pitched roof to comply with the design of the house as well as the roofing material?
It's possible. The way the ordinance reads, it says that it should be similar to the pitch of the house, and it should be of a similar material. And we would have to look at each individual one to see what's going on there. There has been in the past, that there has been through the zoning board of adjustment, that the material has been able to stay metal, that they were just, they added a texture to the paint and painted it the same color. Not saying that's going to be the way it is, that's up to the zoning board of adjustment to make a decision on that, if they need that type of variance.
Some of these may have been built in the nineties, is that correct?
I think it's possible.
I moved there and said, I bought the house in seventy... Sorry. I'm sorry. I can speak pretty loud. I know it's gonna be... I moved there, I bought the house in seventy-six, and there was probably five structures already there in seventy-six. I've lived there forty-eight years, and there is, I counted sixteen in the neighborhood. He's, and there may be sixteen, and he's saying there's twelve that look like they're in compliance.
But let me ask the question. So usually, the carport would, would be, the elevation should meet the front of the house, not the pitch of the house. So if the front of the house is like this and then goes up like this, doesn't the carport go with this, not with this?
Well, if you've got, the way I'm understanding it, and he may can explain, if you've got a pitched roof and you're gonna build an awning out in front, you've gotta keep that pitch coming all the way out. Is that not correct?
The ordinance really just basically gets at, you need to keep with the character of the house.
Which means keeping the same pitch.
So you could drop down, you could go up, but keeping with the overall character of the roof. So when it comes down to it, each case is individual. So if it's, if it's not keeping with the character of the house, then their option would be go get a variance. If it is clearly keeping with the character of the house, then it doesn't require a variance. So it really is gonna be, it depends, you're right. If it's sloping off drastically, then...
Eighty percent of them out there...
You've gotta look at them individually.
Are not, they're flat-roofed. Now, they may have a small pitch on them so they'll drain water, but they're not a pitched roof coming out of the house. And that means restructuring the whole structure. And there's a lot of, I don't mean to pry on that, there's a lot of older people there, there's young people coming in, but there are a lot of, I'm gonna say retired people there, and it's gonna be a cost factor to them.
Thank you very much. I've been told I have allowed far too much noise.
I'm sorry. Thanks, you.
And so my apologies for bringing you back up here and breaking the rules. Tommy, did you have a...
Just, just a comment. We're having a lot of back and forth about structure and all that. That is the reason we have a zoning board of adjustment. That is the things they will look at, and that is their job to grant that if, in their opinion, it's appropriate. So that's the reason the process exists with the ZBA. So this is, to Rick's point, it's, it is gonna be on a case-by-case basis, and they do have a venue in which they will be able to make their case.
That is correct. Each of those, that if they desire to seek a variance, they would have that opportunity to go to the zoning board of adjustment. And it's similar to what Teresa also said, is that if it's an ordinance item, then maybe that's something on our wish list of, all right, do we need to change that for our community in the future?
Yes, Larry.
Back to my, my first point. You have a structures built in nineteen ninety, and then all of a sudden you have an ordinance that's from two thousand and three. I hope you're relatively liberal with variances on this, because, you know, as far as I can see, those people didn't do anything wrong.
Larry, if the structure was legal back then, it will still be legal today.
Correct.
If it was not legal back then, then it, unless they've gotten it cleared up between now and then, then it will not be legal today. But if they were legal then, they're still legal.
Okay.
Correct.
Further questions or comments? So I think we've had a lot of public comment at this point, so it must be time for a vote. All right. With that, those in favor of approving item G, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Passes seven zero. We will now move into item H, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for PD two-three dash oh eight. A request to rezone from the ranch and estate zoning district to the planned development zoning district with an underlying general commercial zoning, allowing kennels, parking, exercise area, staff area, and the housing of dogs, cats, and small animals awaiting adoption being five point four-three-six acres located at fifteen twenty-one South Concho Park Drive. And Aaron, once again, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor, again. Aaron Vanoy, Director Planning and Development Services. Many of us know this as the old fire training station that's there on Avenue L, just across the Concho River. The address is fifteen twenty-one South Concho Park Drive, which is actually addressed on the Concho Park Drive that goes through the park area through there. It's five point four-three-six acres. It's currently zoned ranch and estate and we are going to move it to a planned development so that the current shelter that's on sixty-seven has a place to temporarily shelter their animals while they go, undergo renovations. In our zoning ordinance, it's very difficult to, to find places to shelter animals. This actually is a, a very good location from our perspective, from staff's perspective, because A, it is city-owned. It is away from a lot of residential, although you do see to the, kind of the northeast there is single-family residential, but there's a lot of infrastructure through there and it prohibits some of the building of that property. And then, of course, you have Cristobal Road that goes to the south there that has some residential. This is in District Three, Harry Thomas, in the Glenmore neighborhood. So we did do an analysis of this because animal sheltering can be very significant impact to our citizens and our neighborhoods. And so we did go through that. Again, this is a request just for temporary sheltering. This is not a long-term request and it's while the shelter undergoes renovations. So again, it allows those things that the mayor mentioned about kennels for animals, exercise areas for animals, offices for staff and parking for staff and citizens. The commercial district, the commercial underlying zoning district would allow these activities and potential for weekend adoption events if, as needed, particularly when they start having crowding concerns. And if they needed that as an area to do some shelter, some adoptions, they would have that ability. We also think this location is very central to our community. It is still distanced from some residential areas. Avenue L is a major thoroughfare and so access to it is, is very easy for our citizens and visitors. And again, just to, to mention to our citizens that are watching that this is a temporary situation. Once the, the condition's placed on the planned development allows the property to convert back if any portion of the property is sold in the future. It could be the entire property or just a portion. It would revert back to its current status today and city staff would assist in the, if that sale of that property goes through, then maybe we would help them get to whatever needs zoning that they would need at that time. This did go to our planning commission. They did recommend in favor six to zero back in January. We did put four conditions on it, talking about signage, lighting. The site development plan would be just reviewed as normal in case they do have to add some outdoor kennel space or some exercise area. And again, that condition about the sale, that it would revert back to the general commercial district if there's a sale of the property. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What's the timeframe of temporary?
Right now, we have it on the, the sale. There was discussion at planning commission, but it was not placed in the recommendation going forward. It was a five-year time limit. Talking with Bob Solis, he does not think it's going to take that significant of a time, but he's looking, he's like, well, we need something maybe twelve months, maybe eighteen months, but we're not completely sure. But again, we feel very safe that it is an owned city property. The city gets to dictate what actually can go in there. The reason we chose to do the commercial in case one of our other departments needed to do some storage there or things like that at that property, they wouldn't have to come back and get a rezoning for that, even if the sale of the property didn't happen.
Harry?
I think it's a great place. It's certainly an opportunity to house those animals while we're working on the shelter out on sixty-seven. So from my perspective, I'd make a motion to approve as presented.
Second by Lucy.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Someone spoke to me about this and they had concerns over the plumbing sewer water at that area. It hasn't been used in quite some time, so it's somewhat possible. I wondered if you had checked that out?
That is something that they were going to work with, a contractor, when they do some light renovation to this area. They're going to check all those systems because they know they're going to need those systems when they start sheltering animals. So they have a plan for that. I don't know that it's actually been checked yet, but I know they plan on doing that.
Have you, have you also considered noise abatement?
We did discuss that with them while we were developing this PD and so they're aware that that could become an issue. And so they are going to look at some mitigating efforts. Fortunately, it is all enclosed, but again, again, we know that kennels don't always keep noise inside. So they're going to be keeping monitoring of that and see if they need to do something to mitigate it.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, item H is passed seven zero. That concludes our regular agenda, which means we will be moving into the closed session. Executive session on the provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter five-five-one. Open Meetings, subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under The Following Sections. A, Section five-five-one point oh seven-two, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding The Commercial Lease With Sports Next Level. B, Section five-five-one point oh seven-two, Deliberations About Real Property At Seventy-four oh nine Knickerbocker Road. Item C, Section five-five-one oh seven-two, Deliberations About Real Property At Five-oh-five South Chadburn. Item D, Section five-five-one point oh seven-one, Consultation With Attorney Regarding Risk Management Claims. Item E, Section five-five-one point oh seven-one, Consultation With Attorney Regarding Short-Term Rentals. At this point, which is twelve oh two, we will move into executive session. It looks like it's going to be a long one. Meeting is being called back to order at one thirty-five PM on this February the twentieth of two thousand and twenty-four. There are no announcements to be made from our closed sessions, so we will immediately go into item eight-one. Consider Request For An Appeal The Planning Commission's Denial Of Conditional Use. Twenty-three dash five-three for a short-term rental located at twenty-three oh one Palms Court. And Aaron, you are on.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. We have this appeal of a denied conditional use for twenty-three oh one Palms Court. The conditional use was going to be for a short-term rental. The zoning is RS-one zoning, District One, Mr. Tommy Hebert in the Nazworthy neighborhood. You can see the subject property there and you can see the garage and the parking, you can just see off to the right side. So out in our Nazworthy neighborhood, we currently have seven approved short-term rentals. You can see the applicant is way up here at the top. We've had one that's expired, has not come forward, and then there were two that were denied previously. Here's the notification map. If you notice, you just kind of highlight that green circle. There were eleven properties that that green circle touched. We sent out eleven notices. There were zero in favor within that. I did go back and re-researched that this, this morning again, because we were struggling on whether that is, but that should be one in favor. There was one outside of the area that was in favor of this being, and so it is one in favor. So I want to make that very clear for everybody on city council and out to the public. There were five within the, the circle that were opposed and then there were four within the five-hundred-foot subject property. Let me get that off real quick. So currently, the staff's position is to recommend approval of the conditional use based on Section four oh six of our ordinance for a use of short-term rental at twenty-three oh one Palms Court. At the planning commission, it was voted five-zero to deny the conditional use and thus the appeal here. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Tommy, I'm going to let you open up the second session.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Aaron, is my understanding that this was operating as a short-term rental without having gone through the process?
Yes, I believe they have advertised and have been operating for a period of time. It was very unclear as I went through the research on how long that's been, but they are here to maybe speak to that, but I believe it's been less than a year, but they could probably help clear that up for me.
Okay, well, then maybe I'll, I'll save my other question or another question for the, for the applicant. Another question, how many are allowed in this particular property based on size, beds or parking or whatever? How many are allowed in that particular property?
Well, based on their application where they listed four bedrooms, we would allow two adults per bedroom. So that would be a maximum of eight staying overnight and that's what their application requests.
And how much parking, off-street parking is required for eight?
Well, we require the, the two, the two parking spots and then for every room after that, they would need one parking space. And so that would be a five, they actually have six parking spaces currently that are outside of the right-of-way. So that's all on their private part, private property.
Okay, all right. And then I do, again, I guess I have the, the question for the applicant whenever that's appropriate, Mayor.
You want to just do it now?
Sure.
The applicant will come forward.
Okay. My question is, have the, have the, are the taxes paid current since it's been operating apparently as a short-term rental? Do we have, is the applicant here?
Hi, my name is Joel Amos Gordon. I am an attorney that was hired to represent the homeowners. This is Mr. Sowers, Sowards, I'm sorry, with a D, like Howard, just with an S, and Ms. Grubbs. And I, I think that part of the, part of the issue as far as the denial previously, there was a misunderstanding. My clients never received notice of the hearing, so they didn't attend. And based on my viewing of the hearing, because they didn't attend, the planning commission basically said, well, we're just going to deny it. And so that is a different position that is taken now and I'm glad to see that they're now recommending approval. And I'll just go briefly to answer your question, if you will, sir. The property was purchased in September of last year by my clients. They operated it as an STR very briefly, just a couple of weeks before they were notified that, and, and part of that was a misunderstanding on their part. They thought under the IRS Augusta rule, they could lease it out for up to fourteen nights. They were told that that was incorrect, they realized that was incorrect. And as soon as they were informed of that, they did stop. And so it has been vacant during this whole process from October, so just a couple of weeks after they, they purchased the property until today. And, and of course, we are requesting the approval. I believe that Mr. Sowers can probably answer your question about the taxes.
Yeah, so.
Come, come to the microphone, please.
Sure. So, Justin Sowards, twenty-three oh one Palms Court. So yeah, we were under the impression of the Augusta rule that we'd be allowed, at least a short term, to just kind of test the market, to see if there's a market there. We originally bought the property for our own homestead, but we also are business owners and we work and have children in Midland. So we're having to go back and forth quite a bit. And so we just thought to maximize the property, it is a million-dollar property, there's quite a price tag on that, to help offset some of that and some of that travel, that we would do a little STR, maybe just mostly to friends and family, but to help offset some of the cost of what we're doing. We had no evil intentions in mind and of course, we have a million-dollar property here, so we're not trying to rent it out to the spring breakers. You know, folks like us that, you know, the reason we love your town is, and we've become a member of your, your city is because we get to come here and relax. We get to come here and enjoy the, the lake and everything that has to offer. And so we want to rent to those kind of folks. And so just like any business owner or somebody that was attempting to open a business, we wanted to test the waters a little bit. And so we thought we'd, while we, and at, at this point, we had already spent the money and applied for our certificate. And we were thought that we were under our privilege to rent it out a little bit and see if it was going to take. And if it was, what we might be able to expect for it. We're not business or real estate developers, anything like that. We just, you know, kind of knew at it. We thought we followed the rules. As a matter of fact, we contacted the city on a few occasions and, you know, tried to get some direction as far as should we be a B and B? You know, how much we can stay in it, how much we don't need to stay in it, what rules we follow under. And so it's been pretty much a big labor trying to get here. And so, yes, we rented it.
Four times.
Four times to very discerning people who had nothing but great things to say about our city and the house itself. And so, but once we understood that the city was mad at us, we stopped immediately. We got our letter and we were actually expecting the letter that came to say that we were approved and, you know, welcome to doing business in San Angelo and it was, you're denied. And we really didn't, in the letter itself, it said, we, we met all the check boxes, but we didn't show up. But unfortunately, we were never informed that we should have showed up. As a matter of fact, we were kind of left on the impression that as long as we did check all the boxes, there wouldn't be a need for us to plead our case. And so, you know, regrettably, we didn't make the December meeting, but we are here now. And we wanted to make sure that we had all the representation we needed.
Joel, Joel Gordon again. The, the planning commission did send them a notice of the hearing, they just didn't receive it. It was a return to the, to the planning division and so my clients didn't notice, show up. It wasn't that they weren't notified, they just never got the notice that was sent. Sorry.
No, no problem, no problem. So anyway, definitely, definitely was not any kind of, you know, evil or anything planned on our part. We weren't trying to step out of line. As a matter of fact, to be quite frank, we really didn't have a whole lot of attention. We try to use the place as often as we can. So we don't want to do a long-term rental because we like to come about once a month and stay the weekend. If we can, we do more. Like I said, we're, we're both business owners as well as, you know, we work and have kids in Midland, so it requires quite a bit of our time to be in Midland as well, so.
So do you have a local operator that will be a contact for?
So that would be us. We can be here in a matter of an hour and a half. We also have folks that live locally that if something bad was to happen or she and I, or I could drop what was going on, if something should happen to the house and be here, just about as quickly as anybody that lives in town.
So you're prepared to do that at two or three o'clock in the morning?
Absolutely.
If somebody calls.
I'm from the oilfield. Two or three o'clock in the morning is two or three o'clock in the afternoon to me. So, yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. That's all the questions I have right now, Mayor.
Are there questions from council?
I spoke to a gentleman in, in the break and he seems to be the owner of an unoccupied lot that's next door. I couldn't tell from the pictures if there's another residence on the other side.
There are no residents immediately.
On both sides of us, there's no residence. On the, I guess would be the, the south side of us, the, the right-hand side of us, there's two empty lots. There's an empty lot outside of the propane tank that resides right beside our house. And then there's a residence just on the other side of that.
As good as it's going to get.
Yeah, Larry, there's, there's nothing, there's, there's no residence on either side of them.
And on one of the sides, there's no residence for two, two properties. And they, the gentleman that you're referring to, we talked to him a little bit, he's actually the third property over.
I think he might be this red star.
This red star right there? I think he's that property. Because he's not on the lake side.
Are there any indications that somebody's going to develop either of those lots?
On both sides of us? Probably us, to be honest with you, we're trying to look at the property right next to us, this one here. It's possibly build a house.
So at least for a reasonable time in the future, those are unoccupied lots?
Yes, sir. And they have been for quite a while, to be honest with you. There hasn't been much movement in that neighborhood in a little bit. Since about two thousand and nineteen, when it was developed, I believe, I don't think there's been any new build since.
Looks like there's a new one going in down into the cul-de-sac down there.
Other questions or comments? All right, then, Tommy, would you like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'd, I'd make a motion to overturn the denial of the planning commission.
I'll say it.
Excuse me. If I could chime in, the code does require that the operator resides in Tom Green County, Texas, just so you're aware. So we will require you to have somebody local who can be reached as the operator. Sorry, go ahead.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. Any further public comment? We've had a lot of patience today, dear. You've had a lot of patients today, dear.
Yes, I was going to say good morning, but it's afternoon now, so good afternoon. My name's Mindy Porter, and I'm a member of the Palms community. I did prepare a dress, so I'm just going to go ahead and read from that just to make sure we don't miss anything. So I stand here before y'all today to express my firm opposition to the approval of the appeal. My concerns are deeply rooted in a clear and undeniable contradictions of the City of San Angelo ordinance, specifically Chapter twelve, Exhibit A, Article four, Section four oh six, and that's what they were referencing. So the ordinance mandates that the property owners of a short-term rental must appoint an operator who resides in the county. This is a crucial requirement designed to ensure that any property issues can be addressed promptly, maintaining the peace and integrity of our, sorry, our community. However, the application for this filed by Crystal Grubbs and Justin Sowards as operators appear to disregard this essential requirement. Public records and conversations, notably with Austin Reed, affirm that the operator must not only be designated but actively reside in the county. The publicly accessible tax and property records reveal that neither property owner possesses residence within the county other than the property in question. Further compounding these concerns are the finding from the Midland, sorry, the Midland Central Appraisal District, which indicate that both property owners independently own properties in Midland, Texas, where they both claim homestead exemptions. This fact, coupled with their employment in Midland and their roles with Sowards Company LLC, also based out of Midland, Texas, strongly suggests their permanent residence is not in our county but in Midland County. The significance of these findings cannot be overstated. Oh, sorry. This has been a long experience for us. The ordinance in question is designed not only to ensure operational accountability but also to preserve the residential character of our neighborhoods. The return in the original meeting notice by, or to Ms. Bailey as undeliverable, which is the notice they were referring to, further underscores the lack of a genuine permanent connection to the Tom Green County by the property owners. In the denial letter from the planning committee, they did state they attempted to notify the property owners of the December eighteenth meeting, but it was returned to sender. It is for these reasons that I urge city council to deny this appeal. Approval of this appeal would not only contravene the explicit stipulations for our local ordinance, but would also set a concerning precedence that undermines the integrity of our community's regulations and ordinances. The fact that these property owners have acknowledged these regulations by initialing the application back in October two thousand and twenty-three, yet appear to be, or yet appear to continue to claim homestead exemptions in another county, further highlights a disregard for the legal and ethical standards expected for short-term operators in our community. In conclusion, I respectfully request that the council uphold the integrity of our ordinances and deny the appeal based on clear violations presented. Thank you for your time and consideration this matter. Thank you.
Further public comment?
I just wanted to let you know that.
Your name?
My name is Lucy Reese. I own the property to the left of twenty-three oh one, so there is an owner there. We own both lots at twenty-three seventeen and twenty-three oh nine. I just wanted to state that there is an owner there.
There's no house on it, but you own the lots.
Pardon?
There's no house on those lots.
There is, yes. My house sits on both of these lots, twenty-three oh nine and twenty-three seventeen.
Okay, thank you. Further public comment?
Question for Teresa.
Yes.
Or maybe Erin and Teresa. Before they proceed, would it be before they proceed, or would it be before a CO certificate of occupancy is issued, that they will supply a resident of Tom Green County as the local operator? Would that either be before they're able to proceed or before the certificate of occupancy is issued? When would we have them supply that name?
That could be a condition of the conditional use, that they supply that. On their application, they did list Ms. Grubbs as living in the home, and we did look up at Tom Green County appraisal, and they do have home ownership there, which is what we normally do, but I would put it as a conditional of the conditional use, and we would not move, we would move forward with them starting the CO process, but we would not issue a certificate of occupancy until we solved all those other issues.
Okay, then, Mayor, I would like to amend my motion to include that in there before wherever it's most appropriate. Erin, you working with the legal department or whomever, that we have the name, address, cell phone number of a local Tom Green County, preferably City of San Angelo resident before anything is finalized. So I would amend my motion to include that.
Okay. Yes, Larry?
Is there any requirement that the person operating the STR maintains a home with a homestead exemption in the county that STR is located?
Not a requirement for the homestead exemption. The only requirement is the owner or operator to reside within Tom Green County.
Further questions or the comments?
I would say I would assume we would need an amended second. I'm not a.
We'll do that. There's a motion, an amended motion.
Correct.
An amended second.
Yep.
Public comment on the amended? No comment on the amended, so with that, we will take a vote. Those in favor of the denial based off the amended motion, please say aye.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. We're not denying, we're seeking to overturn, overturn the denial of the planning commission.
We are seeking to overturn the denial.
Correct.
And we'll take that vote.
So we're denying the overturning, but.
Yeah, it's kind of a saying, but whatever, we need to get that language corrected.
Yeah, it's weird.
Yeah, overturned or denied.
We're going with the staff recommendation with our amendments.
Yes.
Yes.
So let's make sure we take that vote. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We will now move into A B, which is Consider Approving Various Board Nominations. Economic Development Corporation, Rick Mantous for mayor, Clifton Jones, SMD one, and Joe Spano, SMD two, all to a second term ending February two thousand and twenty-six. Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Michael Spencer, SMD one, to a second term ending February two thousand and twenty-six. And Public Art Commission, Catherine Bunker, SMD four, to an unexpired term ending April two thousand and twenty-five. May I have a motion for approval of the board nominations as read?
So may.
Okay, Larry made the motion, Harry seconded. Any public comment on these board nominations? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We will now move to item C, which is Announcements In Consideration Of Future Agenda Items, and the one item we need to discuss is dates and scheduling for the strategic planning workshop.
Mayor, this is the follow-up to the meeting we had previously. The dates that I have on here are March twenty-eighth, April ninth, or April twenty-third, and I wanted to get the city council's recommendation. What would be most appropriate or the best timing for y'all?
April twenty-third.
April twenty-third.
What's that?
Did you throw out some dates?
I did, March twenty-eighth, April ninth, and April twenty-third.
April twenty-third.
April twenty-third.
Okay. Anybody have a problem with April twenty-third?
No.
I can't do March twenty-eighth. Well, let me rephrase that.
We're talking April twenty-third.
April, oh, April, I'm sorry. April twenty.
Twenty-third. Twenty-third.
It's either April twenty, March twenty-eighth or April twenty-third.
Well, I just said, let's take a vote on April twenty-third, so.
I'm good.
If there's, no one can do that, we'll move to another date, but the first discussion is April twenty-third.
Twenty-third looks good.
Anybody have a problem with April twenty-third? Then that's our date.
Okay.
What time? Eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty in the morning. We'll meet here.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Fourth. Let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. It is officially adjourned at one fifty-seven PM. We officially made the two o'clock deadline.